Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on April 13th, 2023. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2023 through January 2024. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 17th, 2023. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 13th, 2023 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet in The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We typically have a countdown clock to help you gauge your time, but tonight we don't. So, so folks will be putting the, you know, their, their phone stopwatch is on and, and so that we can be fair about the three-minute guideline rule. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Chow? Mr. Cohen? This, Mr. McGowan?
He's waving at us.
I did hear him. I heard something. Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax? Mr. Tex Zarni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Jack also raised his hand. Jack, here, there we go.
Oh, here.
Thank you.
Mr. Bodikheimer? Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And I think Mia will join us shortly. We'll just make a note of that for the record when it happens, okay? Announcements from members of the board or staff. I know Justin, as always, has his update on the master plan. Why don't you start us off, Justin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We have a lot of action going on in the next month, month and a half, beginning with subcommittee meetings of the members of the Master Plan Steering Committee. We have five of those scheduled, and they're each on an element or two. And those will be in the next week or so, beginning tomorrow. Following that, we will have a community visioning survey to get input from the public, similar to what we did last time. To publicize that, I'll be speaking with groups. We might put an ad out in the paper, you know, go put some flyers at businesses, those types of things. If you have any groups or places you think I should go, I'm more than happy to do so. So please let me know. And then finally, we will have the second open house. We don't have a firm date yet. We're still looking at some, some times and locations. But I intend for it to be before Memorial Day. And we will probably stick with the library/Heinz Plaza now that we get, now that it's nicer out. But also, you know, if those May showers occur, we could run back into the library. So those are the three things that are coming up within the next month, month and a half, and then we will begin to have draft elements of the plan.
Any questions for Justin? Okay, thank you. Any other announcements from board members? Okay, on to subcommittee reports. Are there any subcommittee reports to be? I know the Landscape Committee is going to be meeting next week. I think the time has been set for Wednesday at 9:30. Is that correct, David?
That is correct. I know that Phil had a problem at that time, but I still think that worked best for, for most of the members.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, any other subcommittee reports? All right, seeing none. On to minutes. We have minutes from a regular meeting of October 6th, 2022. Does anybody have comments or suggestions? And if not, would someone like to move those minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Capizoli, seconded by
I'll second.
Mr. O, Mr. I saw, I saw Owen raise his hand, and then I heard Alvin's voice. So we're gonna go with the voice, seconded by Mr. McGowan. All in favor, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Good, thanks. Next up, we have actually a withdrawn request for an extension. So I don't, i- is it appropriate for me, Martina, to read the whole application information? I, I will. I'll just go ahead and do that. This is Palmer Square Properties, the Griggs Corner Surface Parking Lot that we're all familiar with. The extension request from last year had been for a year. That 54, 60, and 65 Witherspoon Street, file number P2319-806P. And my understanding is that they have withdrawn their request to extend their request for, for an extension that we were anticipating. Is that correct, Carrie? And Justin?
Yes, that's correct. They, they formally applied for an extension, and they've withdrawn it.
Okay. And that extension expires, the, the older one expires next month, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it's May 20th it expires, so they would have to pull building permits before that.
Okay. Next up, we have 217 Witherspoon LLC. This is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances at 217 Witherspoon Street, block 21.04, lot 3. This is file number P2222-244P.
Let me just say, Louise, that proof of, proof of notice and service is in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Great. Thank you, Martina. And for members of the public and members of the board who weren't on, and applicants who weren't on when we were discussing this earlier, Martina Bailey is Jerry Muller's law partner, and
Associate. Working on punishment.
Hey, I'm giving you a promotion.
I'll take it. I'll take it.
Jerry's unavailable tonight, and Martina is representing the board, and she and Jerry and Justin met already to sort of go over everything. So you're all prepped, right? And thank you for that proof of notice, which I always forget to ask about. Mr. Kennedy?
Madam Chair, just before we start, there were two members of our team that didn't make the bump over with their links. Just if we could have Howard Mimmo and our architect Marina brought over before we start, they're, they're stuck in the audience at the moment.
Okay, good. Thank you. Carrie, can you make that happen? We'll just give that a couple.
Did you say Howard also?
Correct. Well, we may not need anything for him, but might as well bring him over now, in case we need something for the applicant himself.
Okay.
So I see Marina Rubina is here. Do we have?
I'm attempting it.
Okay. There we go. Okay, good. So, Mr. Lesko, you're gonna get us started, right?
Yes, Ms. Bailey, would you like to swear me in?
Sure, you know what? I'll go ahead and swear all of our municipal staff who are going to testify tonight. If you'd look, or if you could please raise your right hand, this is just the municipal start, just swear. I swear that the testimony I shall give will be the truth.
No, I do.
Thank you very much. And just, Justin, just state your name for the record, although we all know who you are.
Justin Lesko.
And also, for the record, that swearing in covered Dan Weissman, Derek Bridger, and Robert Walker.
That's right.
As well as Mr. Lesko. Good. Go ahead, Justin.
All right, great. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to start by sharing my screen for this application. And for the board members, I, I think the way I'm going to do this, if you don't mind, is just set the stage, really give the summary page, maybe one and two of my memo, and then allow the applicant to, to present before getting into the general comments, because I think a lot of those will be covered by the applicant, and if they're not, you know, I can speak to them after, alongside the other municipal reports. So to begin, this application's at 217 Witherspoon Street for preliminary and final major site plan with variances. I'll zoom in to the north, just off the screen would be the Avalon Apartment Building. Adjacent is the Franklin Maple Apartments that will be developed as part of the affordable housing plan in the future. There are multifamily residential properties to the east, mixed use, including Palissio's Bakery to the south, single-family homes directly across, and these are in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. However, this subject property is not. It is in the RB Residence Business Zoning District of the former borough. It is also in the AH07. However, this application was filed before that overlay was created or approved. So this does not use the AH07 overlay. The building is currently Hilton's Clothing Store is on the first floor. There are offices in it as well, and you'll see there's a good amount of parking spaces in the rear, about twice as much as what is the minimum required right now. So this property, the proposed site plan you'll see in a minute, is for basically an infill development on the parking lot. Four units of four, four bedrooms and four and a half beds in the rear, where you see this parking right now. And I will switch over. Or before I switch over, let me just note that, as you could see on, on Google Maps, there are bus stops for NJ Transit and the Muni Bus along Witherspoon Street. There's a shelter almost directly across that Clay Street, a bus shelter. There are sidewalks along the property, and it is very close in town to, you could walk and bike to many places. The phase two of the Witherspoon Street redesign is actually beginning, I think, the end of next month. And that'll occur adjacent to this property. So let me switch then to the site plan. And this is from the applicant's site plan sheet for landscape and tree protection plan. I think it's just the, the cleanest one to see, to get an idea of what's going on. Here's the existing.
Sorry, do you want to mark this as an exhibit?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this will be PBA. Let's call it PBA.
Okay, thank you. You'll see on here in the front is the, the current two-story brick building, not really to be touched in this application. There is a telecommunications pole on top, and that'll come up later as the municipality has found out that the, the owner of the pole is looking to relocate it. And I think that might be a new kind of development since this was first submitted. In the rear of the property where it's currently all parking lot, there are four units proposed along the back. Right now, cars enter off Witherspoon Lane and exit onto Witherspoon Street. The exit onto Witherspoon Street would be closed off with this site plan, and both the entrance and exit would be on Witherspoon Lane. And I'll briefly touch upon landscaping right now. The arborvitae trees in the rear between the property and the adjacent property are to remain, as are four of the trees on the site, four, two trees will be removed. And I know Mr. Dobremilsky's here, and hopefully he could speak to that either now before he has to leave, or, or after, when he comes back. Just lastly, I'll mention there are 23, I believe, parking spots here in the, the proposed site plan. Two of them will be EV-ready. There are interior spaces for bicycle parking and exterior bicycle parking spaces as well in three locations. With that being said, I think I'd like to turn it over to the applicant at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. I just will ask real quickly if any of the, our others, staff professionals have any, any red flags they want to raise before the applicant, we'll ask the applicant, of course, to address all of the various comments that, that the professionals and the boards, commissions, and committees ask them to, to address. But any, anything that anybody wants to bring up even before the applicant speaks, I'm not seeing any anybody lean forward in their chair and raise their hand. Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
I think Dan, I, I
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
Raises his hand.
No, sorry, I just, I just wanted to let you know, none at this time. That's
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, my name is Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee here for the applicant. It's 217 Witherspoon LLC, and its principal, Howard Binow, who's here tonight. We wanna, are excited to, to finally be here and tell the story about how we got here, what we've been doing for several years to put this project together. Some, some constraints that we have that keep us from doing, implementing the full vision right now, some solutions to them, but in, in a nutshell, to, to piggyback off what your planning director, how he described this, we are looking to replace existing excessive parking in a downtown area with housing units. We believe that the walkable design achieves a lot of these goals by creating a pedestrian corridor that eventually will have the options to connect potentially with other surrounding developments by closing off a gap, kind of the, I, I grew up playing hockey, the hockey players' smile on Witherspoon Street that was a break with the driveway on a, what should be a walkable area to simplify access, bring housing, and improve the site. So reduction of impervious coverage and, and a design that we believe fits extremely well and, and hits what Princeton's goals are for, for downtown development. Now, you will hear there are certainly variances that we need, and we'll talk about AH07 as part of our timeline of how we got here. Because as we've been working on this for, for quite some time throughout the initial attempt at AH07, and then, you know, earlier this year when it was finally introduced. I want to thank staff, though, and your professionals for working with us throughout that time, and, and particularly the board attorney. There was some discussion last week with staff when we were finally able to kind of look at, at their comments about making sure that the timing of this, the obstacles that we have essentially with the front building, and you'll hear about the a long-term lease with a cell tower, and look, we were very happy to hear that they're looking to relocate. We have been pushing and fighting to move them for years, and we are excited that that might happen. We are extremely skeptical that it'll happen on that timeframe, but we, we welcome the, the municipality's assistance in that. That has been a goal of ours since this ownership has, has taken the property. But at the moment, and for the foreseeable future, that does, is an impediment for us, that, as well as a long-term, seven-year lease for a key tenant, the Hilton's Clothing Store that's at this building, that also keeps us from really getting into that building yet. But when we look at that timing and the intervention of AH07, we wanted to make very clear, and we agree 100% with, with staff, to make sure it's absolutely clear that this is not some kind of attempt staging to avoid affordable housing units. And we agree, that was our, our thought in, in reacting to their comments. And I want to thank the board attorney for putting together a, a potential condition that we're fully on board with that would allow that to be addressed. You know, when you look at a, a good, the way we talked about it is when you look at minor subdivisions, you don't want to see someone coming back and taking a bite of the apple every couple of years and getting a series of minor subdivisions. The same thing, you don't want someone to come back and develop the back and somehow, and, and with four units, then come back and do four units in the front and not do any affordable units. But you'll hear why we're, it's, it's laid out like it is, but we fully intend to come back and, and, and welcome the, the condition that when we do additional affordable units, a full 20% of the site, not piecemeal chops of things, is done for affordable housing. We have a, a, a full team here tonight. There's a lot of interesting things to talk about, and appreciative of the fire staff for working with us, about, make sure we can get trucks back there. We have our, our traffic consultant. We will have planning testimony. We have our civil engineer. We have the, the principal for the property owner, and then our architect as well. So as we get started, I wonder if we would want to, I'll leave it to you, but if we want to swear them all in at once as we kind of start going person by person.
Yes, that would be good. So if you could sort of, well, we can swear them all at once with hands raised and whatnot, and then you can sort of do a roll call, Mr. Kennedy, so that we can quickly move through the individuals that have been sworn.
Wonderful.
Okay. Sure, if you could, all of the applicant's witnesses, please raise your right hand or left hand and state, I swear or affirm that the testimony I shall give will be the truth.
I do.
I do.
I do.
All right, and now I'll, I'll call them and ask them to read their names in order that we'll, we'll use them. So Marina, if you could give your name and, and spell it for the record.
Marina Rubina, R-U-B-I-N-A is the last name. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey.
Thank you. And, and with apologies, when, as, as we bring on each witness, unless you'd like us to do the credentials now, I'll, I'll, I'll seek to have them qualified as we go through them. Jim Kamelik, our civil site engineer? I'll, I'll ask you to spell your name, if it's needed, that I don't want to.
C-H-M-I-E-L-A-K, Site Engineer, Control Resources LLC.
All right, next, George Jacomar, our traffic consultant?
George Jacmar, J-A-C-Q-U-E-M-A-R-T, Traffic Consultant.
All right, Susan, next, our, our planner?
Susan Favate, F-A-V-A-T-E, Principal of the FJ Planning, Professional Planning Testimony.
And Howard, we may not actually get to you, but why don't you give us your, your, your name as well for the record?
Sure, it's Howard Mimmo, spelled M-I-M, like Mary and like Nancy, A-U-G-H, Principal 217 Witherspoon LLC.
Thank you. As we often do, we have one exhibit set that has 40 slides. One of them says, "Thank you." But we'd like to have that be our, marked as our one exhibit. I guess with some apologies, we, there's been a lot of updated memos and information the last few days, so it, it, it's gotten reconfigured a bit, even based on today's conditions, but we'll describe each one as we, we go through. Before we do that, Marina, I'll, since you'll start, I'll ask you to, I know you've, you've testified before this board and other boards in Princeton before, but I'll allow you to give your, your credentials until you're told to stop, and, and we'll have you qualified as an expert here.
Well, I'm testifying today as the architect for this project, and I am a registered architect in the state of New Jersey and in the state of California, and I have testified in front of multiple boards in Princeton and other towns in New Jersey.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at the risk of asking someone else to do something technical, ask Marina to, to share her screen with our presentation. We'll start going through this project for the board.
So Ryan, before we begin, how many slides is this going to contain?
Four zero forty.
Forty. Okay, we're going to be labeling this Exhibit A1.
Thank you.
We'll call this, what should we call this? PowerPoint presentation?
Is anyone else having trouble seeing the presentation? I'm seeing it through.
Yeah. Marina, if you want to give it one more try, if, if not, I, I have it as well. I, I could, I'd be able to, to share it.
Since I think we have similar computers, I find putting it in reading view first before sharing the screen does the trick for me. As, how's that? Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Apology, but one thing that we've all learned through COVID is, is how to do these presentations. We've got six different people here, I think, tonight with, with backup copies of the PowerPoint, so I'm happy to, to push through. Marina, we're looking at slide one here. We want to talk about the rendering of, of the project.
All right, so we could, everybody could see and everybody could hear.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. So, thanks again for having us this evening, and we are absolutely thrilled to present this project here tonight, and we thought that although we're very excited about the final product itself, what we really also hope to tell you is not only just the what it is, but the how we got there and the logic behind it, and a little bit of how we see this going forward. So with that, this is our 3D rendering that we hope will represent what you would see from approximately Witherspoon Lane. And as you could see, this is the existing front portion of the parking lot, and then the second portion of the parking lot is where the project is happening. Now I have to figure out how to advance my slides. Oh, here we go.
I think you do it the old-fashioned way by telling me, Marina.
Okay, all right. Oh, Ryan, you're, you're sharing now. Oh, jeez. Okay, all right. So Ryan, thank you for, for reading the slide for me. Okay, great. So we have the top view here to tell you that the project started back in 2020 when Howard reached out to me and said, I have this property in this amazing location, and just to everybody understands, everybody's familiar with Hilton's Clothing Store on the ground floor, but Howard's office is upstairs on the second floor in this building and where he has his accounting firm. So not only is he owner of the building, he also happens to be the occupant. And he felt that there could be something more exciting happening at this property, being so located in such an amazing location and the parking lot being underused. So what we did is we looked at the existing zoning at that time, and we looked at different options, and we were also very excited because this is just as the affordable housing settlement was completed, and the housing was going to be happening next door. So we, with that in mind, Ryan, next slide, please. Thank you. So we looked at different options of what one could do utilizing the RB zoning, and we presented different options to the municipality and talked kind of in-house to figure out, well, what could be done. And one is what can be done with the RB zoning, and the other is what can be done in a timeline that relates to the building and what is happening at the building. So we were trying to go for something with the least number of variances, and as I, I, I don't personally know of anything in an RB zone that has ever been done without a variance. It's kind of a very difficult zoning. So we tried to minimize We tried to minimize them as much as possible and then the other constraint as we found out through our sort of. Researching the site conditions, which also include things that are. Uh, physical to the site, but also legal like lease agreements is that. The antenna on top of the building is a lease that Howard inherited from the previous owners, it's Crown Castle. And Hilton's is established long-term business on the ground floor of the existing building, so we really need to take into consideration how. How they're going to be living through this and um. We, in one of the reports, the question came up, well, why only four units? And um, if we read the zoning, like we did, the end lots are supposed to be forty feet and the middle lots are supposed to be twenty feet. With our width of the property. Being a hundred and twenty eight point eight feet. A hundred and twenty is needed for four units, so that's really all we could fit. And I will show the other options that we looked at and we thought, I'll go back for a second, just one thought that. This option, the benefit was the least amount of variances. And also it allows for the existing building to remain and existing leases to resolve themselves. But also it allows sort of to have a phase one, phase two, where future development could be possible. Uh, next slide, please. So we looked at other options where instead of having in a attached dwelling configuration, we looked at a multi. Family configuration. Where the the number of variances just went. Ballooned because um. It would be a much bigger building and it would trigger a lot more issues. And the bigger the building, the more it would start encroaching on the existing tenants in the front building. And really, really create a conflict, so let's look at the other one. Of course, you know, we all dream and think like, oh, my goodness, this would be amazing, right? If we could do all of this at once, but. This option of linking the new development and the old development. Well, first of all, at that point in the RB, that would be so many variances, it wouldn't even be funny. And this would be um, something that couldn't happen for about twelve years because of the existing leases. So rather than thinking like, okay, well, let's wait for twelve years, we thought what we could do now with our circumstances that we could move forward, what's the project now? So we, the next slide, please, Ryan. Thank you, so we thought, okay. Well, we got the width for four units, let's let's do that and let's think about. Sort of, we're going to do this part first and then. Talk about the front when we can, when that becomes available, so. We again went back to the municipality, scheduled a meeting, had a meeting. Literally, uh. Right after that, uh, Ryan, uh, next slide, please, is when affordable housing overlay seven version. So at that point, we were like, oh, oh. Ooh, let's let's sit tight, hold your breath a little bit, see what happens, so. Unfortunately, that didn't quite. Work out and that was tabled, so at that point we were like, okay. Well. That option is off the table, we don't know, we can't do anything with the front building for the least purposes, so let's. I guess all we could do is work with the RB zoning. Uh, next slide, please. So at that point, we moved forward with um, developing our civil engineering and site engineering, so um. I'm sure we'll we'll get into and Jim will talk in detail, but. What we wanted to point out is that we really appreciated how um, staff work with us and we've reviewed different options. We had slightly different configurations of the parking lot. So this was our submitted in June twenty twenty two. And um, I think the next slide points out the comments that we received from the staff. Yep, so at that point, we had a very productive conversation and we really. Felt that the staff helped us bring this thought process to the next level. So the interesting things that um. Kind of a couple of things came out of that is when we originally started talking about this project, the fear was that. Oh, my goodness, it's going to be a building in the middle of a parking lot, ugh, who wants a building in the middle of the parking lot? So we started thinking about this as how do we? Even at this stage of the game, even if we can't do anything with the front building, how do we develop something that doesn't feel? Like, you know, here is the parking lot and blonk, here's the building, so this is where we started developing. More of a pedestrian thinking and what we call a complete complete streets approach, which I will. Talk about a little bit further, but when we first showed this to the staff. As soon as we showed our three D model, they said, oh, okay, now we understand what you're talking about. It's not just kind of a box in the parking lot, but what you're trying to do, you're trying to create a landmark. So they had all the comments about. How we need to deal with trash, how we need to deal with traffic engineering, how our emergency vehicles are going to get in and out. Discuss how we're closing the connection on Witherspoon Street, but also it was really telling that. Once we started thinking about that corner as being architecturally interesting, everybody said. Oh, okay, we understand. So in our first iterations of this, we were trying to figure out, well, what goes on that corner? Like, how do we actually make it an interesting corner? So that it becomes street-like. And at that point, you know, I've tried like, well, maybe a clock, maybe this, and Howard said, what about art? We said, oh, Howard. Wow, so that was um, Howard's idea, so uh, we'll we'll talk more about the art, but. Um, it's incredible that through all these processes and through Howard's. Willingness to work with everybody and try to come up with creative solutions. We've sort of arrived at a very interesting development. All right, next slide. Thank you, so this is the 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 time where sort of we went away, redesigned and we had submitted our. Latest iteration, but so again, we're trying to achieve something that's not. You know, just plain parking lot, but what we're trying to create is kind of a layered approach where there's. Cars, then there's a green zone, then there's a pedestrian sidewalk, then there's sort of softening. Of things between that and the building, then the building, and then the building has backyards, so that's on the building portion. And for us, um, especially at that point, there were a lot of discussions. Um, and community meetings and presentations about the Franklin Lot Development next door. And one of the recommendations in there, um. I can't exactly remember which task force, there were multiple task, task force subcommittees. That worked on that, that suggested that it would be really wonderful to have sort of mid-block connections. And we thought that what this design does is by getting this started, this pedestrian connection. And real approach as a kind of a street. That's welcoming for pedestrians could possibly. If the Franklin Lot Development decides to be friends with us, then we would be very happy to be friends with them. And the other thing that through um, working on where the trash would go. We, we originally started with the trash at the back of the parking lot, which is sort of like a standard thing people do. But we thought like, well, if we're going to be friends with these people. Next door, kind of putting trash that way is really not the way to go, so tucking the trash away. So if any linkages or connections, they could actually be, you don't need to be walking by the trash. So we found a really nice location for the trash. Our engineers will discuss that and also how they. Work with staff to address a lot of their traffic concerns. Let's try next slide, please. So finally, we get our letter, our project is deemed complete. And then after that, comes out HO two seven again. And we're like, oh. Here, we missed it, right? We've been already deemed complete, we've done all this work. And here it comes. So I guess we kind of ended up in this sort of limbo zone where. We didn't at any point sort of try to find any loopholes or avoid anything, it's just we kind of ended up with a strange timing situation. So next slide, uh, to tell you about the antenna. So we've been trying to to work with the antenna owner, Crown Castle. So you see, so the antenna consists of two things, so there's the antenna itself that's on the roof of the building. As Ryan has the orange arrows pointing. And then the other one is there's this kind of semi-brick enclosure that has a lot of equipment and stuff that's on the ground. And we can't do anything about that. So we have been trying to work with them, maybe they will find another place to go. So at some point, we, they even suggested that they would like to have a cow, for anybody excited to know what a cow is, it's sell-on wheels. Where they would bring a temporary thing and park it in the parking lot. For and before they relocate the whole thing, so we've gone through all sorts of discussions. And I haven't gone anywhere yet. So then, uh, we were very surprised to read in the staff report that they will be decommissioning in six to eight months. So we've been trying to reach them. And have not had any confirmation, so hopefully you guys have better information than we do, but at this point in time. All the information we have is that the antenna is on the roof, the stuff is in the parking lot, we can't do anything about it.
And the applicant has many attorneys, I I'm the nice person that we bring to the board, he's got someone as well, uh, working on. Helping to meet our goal to to. Remove this encumbrance, um, and we're honestly excited to see. Uh, movement with them and the township, but uh. Uh, no letter of intent yet, those things take some time, we are excited that it might happen soon, but we have been, we've been working on this for. Uh, since since Howard, since this this ownership bought the property. And we're hoping it won't be that long uh, until this really happens, but we've we've kind of heard this before and unfortunately. Hopefully with the town's help, we will move them more quickly and get onto our phase two.
Right, so everybody keep fingers crossed from now on. Uh, and then there's, um, as Ryan said, there's the ground floor tenant who has been in this building for years and years. It's a well-established tenant and um, Howard really helped them survive through COVID, so. They have a really great relationship and it's important to us that it's a legal situation, they can't be. Impacted, but also it's a great business that has to stay. Uh, next slide, please. So back to you sort of how we got here, here we are. Uh, back to again us, um, with. Our design and what we um, came up with and we're really proud of and then we'll walk you through. Um, how we think our design works. Um, so, okay, Ryan, go back for a second, so this is, as I said, the view from Witherspoon Lane. Um, as you could see, the art piece has developed further and we'll discuss that separately. Uh, but as you could see, what we're trying to achieve is this sort of layered approach where you have. A parked car, then there's a green strip, then there's a pedestrian. Walking zone and then there's a transitional sort of semi-private zone where you feel that you're. Approaching somebody's home. And then the other interesting um, thing for me, maybe this is just architectural talk, but I think it's really important for people to feel that. Even though they live in a multi-family building or in this phase, it's technically called attached dwellings, but they live in a building with other people. They have a sense of ownership and they have a sense of. Uh, you know, of being able to tell somebody, you know, go, my door is the red door and my door is the yellow door, so having. Sort of this combination of feeling that you live in a larger community, but also something personal. And the artist that has been working on the artwork is also happens to be an incredible. Color specialist, so she's been working with us to help us with the building colors. And we have um, sort of drawn on her expertise of how to create something that's. A larger building that works as a unit, but at the same time has individual character so that people feel like they have individual. Porches effectively that are covered and people enter and they're. Have their own identity, so. Next slide, please. So this is the view from the other side, uh, hopefully if and when the Franklin Development. Uh, does decide to move forward and hopefully, oh, Ryan, sorry, couldn't go back for just one second. So if you could see that gray ground, dark gray ground floor box. Yeah, that guy, um, so that consists of in big part of our side yard encroachment and that's purely equipment. Um, that um, our civil engineer will talk about that we have to house, but it also provides sort of a stepping down effect. Where you don't have a solid. Facade, but you kind of have an engage in interesting facade and it comes down to the human scale. So in this case, it's an equipment room on the other side on the next slide. We also have a similar one, this is our bike storage indoor bike storage room. Uh, so again, you don't get kind of a sheer blank facade, but it starts out. From hopefully you're connecting to something next door and then there's a. Lower volume and then there's a bigger volume and then it just kind of goes from there. Uh, so as any, maybe any of you attended the presentations for the um. Franklin Lot, when different architects presented. I was really trying to figure out what, how do you build these multi-family projects? So that they feel personal, that people have a sense of community, what what makes them special and this being so close to the um. Neighborhoods where we all go trick or treating with our kids is for me sort of one of the standards of success is would you feel comfortable going trick or treating? With a child and what makes that possible and to me what makes that possible is that. Human scale connection, that connection, you know, here's somebody's door, here's somebody's stoop. And then there's a sidewalk and then there's a tree and then there are the cars so that I feel sort of separated and protected and there's a layering approach. Next slide, please. Uh, and then this is the view of the backyard. This is kind of a theoretical view because this is actually missing a fence. But in order to actually fit the view uh, and see the backyards of these homes, uh, we had to remove the fence. Uh, so this shows um, again, that sort of individual within a larger group context of the colorful. Work that we've done with the artists and also it shows that although the footprints of the units is quite compact. Uh, having large windows towards the back allows that indoor-outdoor connection where the spaces feel that they're outdoor rooms. That we create spaces outdoor that are um, helping make the indoor spaces feel bigger. Next slide, please. Yes, so I'll go back, start. This is supposed to be reminding me, so you see on the left-hand side. That green um, abreviate fence. That's not something theoretical, that's there already that exists, so Ryan's going to show it to us now again one more time in real life. So that's there, the plan is to keep it, it provides such wonderful privacy, so. We're very, very much on board and keeping that.
Maybe the one time where the rendering actually makes the greeting work seem smaller than it actually is in reality.
Um, and then the next slide. Yeah, there you go, and that's the fence. Uh, that Jim will talk about the new version of the fence, but basically that's the portion that was not. This is where we were standing, looking back at the development um, in the previous rendering.
I'm sorry, Marina, as the architect, can you please describe the materials that are being proposed and the color scheme?
For the building, yes, absolutely, thank you, this is a very good point, so. Uh, the proposed building and this actually allows us to talk a little bit about our um. Green features and we really hope to use materials that are durable, that do not require. Painting that have integral color to them, that they're, you know, they already come pre-colored. So we have most of the uh, facades are brick. Uh, with fiber cement paneling and we have um, two colors of brick. Uh, that again, we worked with our color artist, um, all the windows are aluminum clad, so they won't ever have to be painted. And then the portions that are painted are the multicolored. Um, the siding that's shown, that's fiber cement, that's already comes again pre-painted, so. Um, in addition, we are planning on having solar panels on top of the building. We will have to exactly figure out exactly how how that will work, but definitely they're going. Um, on top of the building and also um. The orientation of the building um, allows us to have. Not only privacy in the backyards, but also in the afternoons, the building shades the backyards. So people could be outdoors in, you know, not hot. Backyard, so I personally have a backyard that faces south and I have a portion of my house. Facing sort of extending west, so by the time the afternoon rolls around, the shade of the portion of the building. Creates a really great place to be outside, so that's the hope here. Um, hopefully I described that, uh, those two are downspouts, which would be aluminum, so. Um hopefully I described that. Uh those two are downspouts, which would be aluminum. So uh hopefully I'm. I'm not forgetting anything, but if I will, I'll come back to it. Um. Uh yes, okay. So again, uh to finish, my first portion here is that. We really appreciate um that um Justin picked up on a lot of the things that we really hope. Uh to achieve in this project and um we feel that uh these are great improvements, the new housing in such an incredible walkable location. We are making way more green space where it's a complete solid paved parking lot. Now we're introducing greenery. Uh we feel that we're making the access to Witherspoon Street. A much safer place as we have a lot of kids going to school. There's a bus stop across the street. There's a school bus stop there. And having less penetrations and cars driving with less visibility is a much safer way to go. Um. So we really hope that um the friends at Franklin site hopefully will get going soon and will be. Connecting with us. So we feel that this um even though our new master plan is not. Up and running yet, it's in the works as Justin was saying, but we already have a climate action plan and. A lot of these things, the the walkability, the pedestrian friendly, the sort of. Infill housing that we're starting to do here is very much in the objectives and the actions that are um. Uh climate action plan has started us in thinking. Um. And we hope that this becomes kind of the link to the future developments on our property. And also on the neighboring properties. And now that the HO seven is in place. Finally, it's very exciting for everybody that the difficult zoning the RB is may not necessarily have to be applied anymore. So uh now on the next slide, I think we're gonna shift gears and have Jim start talking about the site. Um and then if I've forgotten anything, I'll just be just sort of jumping back in and then I'll pick up.
Thank you Marina. And Madam Chair, um obviously Marina is not going anywhere. She's available for questions if you'd like to, if anyone uh would like to stop now. Um certainly uh yield to you if you'd like that or or for us to go on to uh uh our civil engineer next.
Um a- any members of the board have pressing questions to pose to Ms. Rubina right now?
Uh I have a quick, I have a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh can you, I'm just gonna try to get an orient, an orientation. This whole building is going to be on the parking lot and and where's Witherspoon Street in relation to? What you showed to the render you just showed?
Yes, so this is, this building is parallel to Witherspoon Street. It is also parallel to Hilton's front building, so they're kind of. Parallel to each other, right? So if we go back to the um. Once Jim starts talking about the site plan, I think it'll be much more. Um clear, but uh Ryan, go back to the to the aerial perspective, maybe? And outline to see where that lonely cars parked and there's that little green strip. That that second parking lot is where the building is going.
I think, not to skip ahead, but I think showing this, the the colored site plan, I think that you have good, good timing with your question because you could see.
Perfect timing.
Here's it it it's rotated ninety degrees, but here's the the existing building Witherspoon left to right uh at the top. Uh the overparked bottom here. Now rotating, you can see the new building where that extra parking is and now Witherspoon Street to the left, Witherspoon Lane uh to the bottom.
Right, right.
Very quick question. So you said um the the panels are fiber cement. Did I get that right?
Yep.
What is that kind of fiber, fiber on cement?
Fiber, no, no, fiber cement is a basically a generic product. Uh brand name would be either hardy or borrel. So sometimes people say hardy siding or borrel siding. The actual product that they're made out of is called fiber cement. So we don't know exactly who the manufacturer is, so we call it fiber cement.
But it's cement.
It's a cementitious product. It's made out of. Fiber reinforced cement, basically.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Hopefully that clarifies it.
And Marina, the um in one of the renderings, you showed little uh divisions between the backyards. Um I think it was the last one when you were showing the backyards. Um am I reading that correctly that those are brick?
Uh there, a little bit of a portion of it is brick and then it's a painted fence. And I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but uh we were discussing one of the comments. Uh that um the fire team was asking if there's a way to create a connection between people's backyards. So that the firefighters could go through and we thought that would be a really great idea because that portion that's fenced, we can have a gate. So the the firefighters could go through, but also, you know, kids could go visit each other without having to go anywhere. I. I think that would be such a lovely connection. We're like, yes, let's have gates. So there's a um kind of a a brick portion next to the building and that. It's sort of a layering approach in my view is where you're trying to blur the boundary where the building ends and the outdoor begins and it sort of allows. The building to kind of come outside and create outdoor rooms. And then it kind of becomes more of a, so first it's the building material, then it's the fencing material with a gate for everybody to go through and visit each other. Um and then there's the green fence. So it just sort of starts kind of slowly transitioning from one material to the next. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yes, it does.
I stole Jim's thunder, my God.
And I I see Zenon has his hand raised. I'm already breaking our let's move along rule, but go ahead Zenon. Not a rule, I was just attending. Uh Zenon, you're still um muted.
Sorry, I I I can save my comments for later if we wanna, you know, save all the comments.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's, if it's just.
Hopefully I won't get disconnected and be happy to try to answer them later.
Okay.
I already failed at starting the Zoom um sharing, so see what happens next.
It sounds like Zenon has comments, not questions.
Yeah, it does. Okay, perfect, perfect.
Okay, so Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, David, I didn't mean to talk over you. Mr. Kennedy, who's up?
Uh next we have uh Jim Kamalik, our civil engineer. Uh I know Jim, uh you've been here before this board many, many, many times. I know you're licensed uh. Uh planner, uh engineer, but you want to briefly give the your uh credentials and we'll have you accepted hopefully as an expert this evening?
Sure. Yeah, I've been practicing civil engineering and site planning for about twenty-five years now. Um licensed in the state of New Jersey, engineering degree in the field of civil and environmental engineering from Rutgers. Uh university and qualified before many other boards and the boards here in Princeton um frequently, so.
Yes, yes, you have. We accept your qualifications. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh so Jim, here we're on slide twenty-one. This is that uh aerial photo. You want to just a little bit talk about the uh existing. Uh conditions before we go to the the site plan?
Sure, I guess um. You can see on the left-hand uh side of the screen in between the front building and the adjacent building to the south or to the left, that's Witherspoon Lane. So that would be the. The ingress are coming into the site um through the the main drive aisle and through the parking lot and then in the upper right-hand portion of the. The aerial here to the right of the existing building, that's a one-way egress across the public sidewalk. And then into Witherspoon Street where the the site distance is a little limited in that location just because of the proximity of the building number one. And the topography, there's a little sort of elevated berm there with the tree on the right-hand side. So that's. That's an element that will be improved with this um particular plan. And what you'll see is that we're also creating sort of a pedestrian way from our site. In the proposed condition through that area as well. So that we we do have this pedestrian way north and south in front of the new building, but we also have one east and west. Um at the end of the existing building near where the trash enclosure is. Uh and that's lined up uniquely there with. The ADA um open striped area as well to provide some additional pedestrian movement from our site to the public right of way. Um so I think we can stick with this slide and as Marina previously introduced, we have the existing building on the left, which will remain. Um a hundred percent intact with all of its current entries. We have several entries on the westerly side or the left of the existing building. Um we also did provide and our traffic engineer can speak in a little more detail, but we did provide some supplemental. Uh bicycle parking on the existing building so that the ordinance is satisfied for. Not only the new building requirements, but the existing building. So we're putting um several bike parking areas um on the existing building to the left. To address Mr. Lesko's question, those will be located within existing ground cover areas of vegetation or liriope beds. So we, there will not be any negative impact to existing planting in that area and that was a question that came up. Um during the review. While we're on the existing building, I would also say that. At the rear of the building, we have head-on parking or striping of ten stalls as we've highlighted here. That um are existing and currently will remain in their existing form. There are um parking bumpers that will be utilized to keep the vehicles and currently in existence. And in a proposed condition away from the building to provide an adequate um retainer for vehicle movement closer to the building. And you can see that we have three entrances along the back of the building. Um one on the southerly side near the cell tower equipment. Or where that um brick uh paver striped area is, there's a door. Just just to the north of that or up on the page, that's rear entrance number one currently exists. We're not changing that. That's. Uh currently accessible into the interior space. And then at the other end of the building, um we have. A second rear entrance that we're slightly reconfiguring there with a parking stall in front and then a side exit ramp directed to the ADA stall. That as well will remain in its existing topographic condition and will provide ADA access. To that end entrance and then the entrance in the middle of the rear of the building, which was a comment from staff. That'll remain as in its existing condition, but it's really a supplemental auxiliary access and and not made for main access. Um into the interior space. It's just used occasionally by um by employees, so. Uh additional ADA access is not required in that location. You can see that the general configuration of the access from Witherspoon Lane will um. On the bottom part of the page will stay as it is today. And we will provide a twenty-four foot wide dry aisle to comply with the ordinance. Um as well as um parking stalls. In terms of the their overall depth and width, they're eight and a half feet wide for the standard stalls. And eighteen feet long, so um the relief is requested for eight and a half feet, which is suitable in a condition such as this. Uh from the nine-foot standard because of the overall constraints of the lot. Um and providing the necessary parking. And um as previously mentioned, we are providing uh down at the end of the parking lot, two EV parking stalls. And infrastructure for that. Um that's indicated on our plan and on the left-hand side. Uh we've configured an ADA stall at the end of the parking area and the striped area, which as I mentioned previously will. Provide pedestrian egress uh in a more uh easy fashion to Witherspoon Street. As well as to the enclosed uh trash and recycling area. Uh that we're showing here with a five-foot setback from the property line, which does comply with the ordinance as well as a five-foot setback. Uh where the walkway is from the existing building. Uh one of the comments was. Um can any kind of supplemental organic waste container be provided? And we did discuss that certainly. Within the trash enclosure area in that upper left-hand corner of that enclosure area, there's available. Spot for a small can on wheels, for example, if service is provided at some time in the future, which I don't believe there is currently. Um we feel that that would be, you know, a suitable area for uh, you know, a mobile movable container that wouldn't impact. Um the overall operation of that. Uh trash enclosure area that we've that we've included here that is screened and also does have. Landscaping elements along the side property line as well as in front um between. The Witherspoon right of way and that enclosure. Um I should also mention that.
Um Shemilla, can you, can you use your cursor as you talk about these spaces to to indicate? I I sort of lost you there for a minute.
Sure. Where would you like uh Ryan's managing the cursor? So where would you like?
Oh, 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 um.
Enclosure or?
Yeah, the trash, so the trash enclosure is just on the on the up upper side of the new pedestrian.
Yeah, that's that 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 lighter color or the concrete is sort of a.
Yeah.
Asymmetrical trapezoidal area and that would be for. Um like typically, most likely, perhaps smaller containers, but uh we did speak with the uh. Trash and recycling provider and they suggested three-yard containers there. That would be wheeled out through that six and a half foot um opening within the trash enclosure area and then go out to the. The public right of way and Witherspoon Street and. Um trash pickup and recycling is handled within the Witherspoon Street corridor along Witherspoon Street for all of the other properties in this local area. So.
Mm-hmm.
But this will do is it'll simplify the movement, it'll keep um trash vehicles out of the parking lot from coming in. You know, trying to make movements internal to the site and it'll just be streamlined with the way operations are today. So that's what we had discussed with staff and then along um. Ryan, along that right of way where the existing uh driveway curb depression is. At the street, we'll just leave a six-foot wide depressed area so that they can easily get those containers out to the right of way at the Witherspoon Street curb.
Good, good, cuz that, yeah, that's challenging. It's very, very tight there as you've pointed out before and what you just described sounds like a really good approach.
Yeah, and we tried to plant that area um, you know, a bit and meander that sidewalk in that. That location, so there's a little bit more buffering and then the plant material can grow up on the outside of that fence, et cetera, so.
Um I skipped ahead a bit, Jim, uh just to show the blow up.
This is a better, a better zoomed-in view here. So I think we hit the highlights on that particular um area in terms of the overall drainage of the site. Um this is a grading plan. We're largely keeping the existing um. General grading, we're not changing it substantially. I would say that overall from the stormwater management perspective, again, we're decreasing the impervious coverage on the site. By approximately six percent overall and we're not increasing it, which you would, you know, normally have with development projects such as this or increasing the green space. Um that will overall decrease the, you know, the site runoff uh from the property and we're below the thresholds. Of necessitating, you know, major project requirements from a stormwater management perspective. However. There are some unique conditions on the site where currently. The entire parking lot in the rear of the site where the parking lot to stay and the upper parking lot where the proposed building is, Ryan, where the. Where our four units are, that whole back area currently drains through. Um the trash and recycling and. Proposed sidewalk area out to Witherspoon Street. So it's overland drainage and it, all the water just drains out over the public sidewalk. And into the street, there are no storm drains, you know, currently at this location. Um so we've, we we identified that as a need from a conveyance standpoint. And we did propose pretty extensive um underground piping from a housekeeping and management standpoint within the backyards to make sure that they're. Usable and dry within the pervious areas with a few yard inlets. And then uh along that back property line, Ryan, and then wrapping around to the left, heading towards Witherspoon Street. We're extending that, including a trench drain by the ADA handicap stall and then. We were previously, because of existing utility issues within Witherspoon Street, going to tie it into an inlet under um. Down at the corner of Franklin, uh we did coordinate with Mr. Weissman and the Phase Two uh roadway improvement. Project and identified that will pretty easily within twenty or twenty-five feet of the our property boundary within the Witherspoon Street corridor. Will be able to tie into a proposed inlet right within the street there. And I think his concern was, once we get offsite, having a long line. Going another hundred feet down to Franklin Township, is there another way to do it? And it just so happens that with those improvements. We'll be able to make that tie in. So um again, from a stormwater management perspective, we we looked at this. Um, you know, we're we're disturbing a portion of the parking lot, we're below our. You know, we're, we're disturbing a portion of the parking lot, we're below our thresholds, we're increasing the green space on the site. We do have, you know, generally unfavorable conditions here with rock and subsurface drainage, so we focused our efforts on the conveyance standpoint, how we, we could improve those conditions that currently exist today. Next slide.
Jim, I'm, I'm wondering if I should go back a slide and maybe use this to talk a little bit about the, the screening and, and landscaping in a little bit more detail.
Sure. So on the, on the right-hand side or the east side of the rear yard of the proposed four units, we have that Arbividey well-grown-in evergreen screen there, and they're about sixteen feet tall, you know, very dense buffer plantings that are proposed to remain. And there currently exists a chain link fence on, along the property line behind the Arbividey, we saw the picture previously of that, and I expect that that we would probably want that to remain in its, in its existing condition. So from a buffering standpoint, the existing condition really addresses what we feel is necessary at that location. And then as you traverse around the parking lot to the north along the Franklin property there, you can see here that there's an existing chain link fence that is in significant disrepair. The photo previously showed that it was broken in a few areas and we do have some existing trees and lower level vegetation that was evident in that picture. Our plan included the, the proposal of a six-foot high board-on-board fence along the property line to provide you know, a, a visual barrier and then Allegheny Viburnum. Mostly a semi-evergreen shrubs that would grow up in front of that fence along that property line. In order to provide, you know, a vegetated buffer around the parking lot, so. You know, that was our vision for it in terms of, I think, the way the ordinance is written, the board does have the ability to to take a look at that area and, and if they think that vegetation is, would be sufficient or preferable, we can leave it to that, or we could supplement it with a solid board-on-board fence. Which is what we had in mind, you know, so if there's any direction on that. You know, in, in, in a different direction that the board would like to see them, please let us know, but that was our that was our plan for that location. In terms of other landscaping on the property in front of each unit, we have included planter beds with foundation plantings here, as you can see, sort of highlighted. Based on what the detailed landscaping is in front of units A, B, C, and D. And then as Marina mentioned previously, as part of our streetscape corridor here, we did include street trees within the green parkway. Between the four-foot sidewalk, Brian, if you could highlight the proposed four-foot sidewalk in front of the residential units. And basically create sort of a street tree element between the parking and that sidewalk. So we wanted to create that that, you know, vegetated element there. There were some comments as to some concerns that, look, it's only a two-foot wide parkway, we want to plant these trees, make sure that they survive. And they have the facilities to do that. And I think in order to address that concern, you know, we've thought about it, we can discuss and refine elements with Mr. Dover Milske. Should this be approved as a condition, but there are things that we can do, for example. We can make, we can just make some slight shifts to these tree locations, make sure that they're at the end of a parking strike. To minimize conflict with vehicular movements, we could also at those locations provide a a tree well that, you know, a diamond-shaped tree well that protrudes slightly into the parking area at the strike location to increase the soil mass. We can supplement that possibly with CU structural soil for those trees and you know, take a look at making sure that we have enough soil volume, you know, in that vicinity and the details of that, I think. We can come up with something that would be satisfying to the professionals so that the viability of these trees can be maintained. We're really hesitant to pick those trees up, move them away from the parking area and put them extremely close to the building because as you can see, the front yard areas are rather efficient. And that average distance from the facade to the back of the sidewalk, Ryan, if you could just highlight one of the residential units, the front of that building to the back of the sidewalk to the left, like on average, that's about seven to eight feet there. So we do have some geometric constraints where we want these shade trees to have their canopy available for them to to grow, and I think those are some details, you know, as a condition, we can come up with something that, and refine those details to make sure that that works.
But Jim, the idea I think with, with having them in that zone is, is to mimic or create the type of street plannings that you'd expect on a street to have automobile, street tree, pedestrian area, and then more private area. So that we, we located them to be the type of sheltering, I suppose, or, or buffer that you kind of expect in that pattern of vehicles, street tree sidewalk.
Sure, that makes a lot of sense, but also it's going to be providing some really important shade on the west side of the building, which is yeah, I mean, I I walk out onto asphalt out my back door, not to make this about me, but it is blazing hot next to that asphalt. And so, you know, one of the things we could talk about later is you know, silvacell or even forest pavement, which is cooler than than traditional asphalt, but we don't need to prejudge that, but I, I think you're right that it's really important to to make sure that those trees are given what they need to grow big and to thrive.
Right.
For everybody's sake. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just, you know, zoomed in, I see that the travel lane in the parking lot is twenty-four feet wide. Is there any possibility of narrowing that a little bit? I know that's the ideal. But if you could narrow that travel lane, you could widen this strip, and I think that would go a long way towards addressing the tree concerns.
I think it's a, it's a good idea to discuss and maybe our traffic engineer can chime in on that, Mr. Cohen, once, once I'm finished and talk about the feasibility of getting another you know, foot or two there, maybe that would be a benefit.
And, and, and you'll, you'll hear, Mr. Cohen, when we get to that, you know, you might see that the travel lane is actually kind of intentionally narrowed as you get to the, the Witherspoon Lane part of it, and there was some consciousness in, in restricting it in some places. So not to, not to jump too far ahead, but that, that's an excellent
Right.
Point you're making, yeah.
You know, I, I, I'm also jumping ahead and imagining that you left it wider so that you could get vehicles turning around, which was another one of the engineering comments, but I'll, I'll let Mr. Jackamart talk about both of those issues.
Jim, if you could also, I know there were some comments about particular species, maybe goes without saying that we're, we're in agreement with, you know, making sure that these be native plants, for example, there were some ground cover suggestions, those are the type of things that we're applicant is agreeable, just wanted to confirm that while we're, while we're talking about it.
Yes. One other thing that came up in the traffic engineer's review was the consideration, was there a consideration given to any further extension of the sidewalk from the bicycle room area? Out to the trash enclosure area. Because of the topography and the, the provisions for this turnout area at the end of the parking lot. We didn't feel that there was a real necessity to extend the sidewalk in that location, we only have so much space. But I think that this does work, we have a depressed curb area at the end of that sidewalk, and it's in real close proximity to the striped area, and that was sort of the logic of getting people from that sidewalk into the ADA striped area, and then they can continue out to Witherspoon Street, so. You know, that's, that's not to say that we can't put a, a little crosswalk striping across this driveway here from the ADA striping over where Ryan is highlighting to this curb return, I think it might be a little, you know, overkill or, or more visually impactful because everybody in the four units is going to know how to traverse that really, but so we don't really feel like that is necessary, but at least from a sidewalk standpoint, I think we provided what's needed here. Relative to that. And in terms of lighting, the, the lighting, we've, we've kept it sensitive and cut off fixtures, you know, facing down really recessed canopy lights, Ryan, if you could just highlight with recess within the canopy over each front porch of the residential units, the pink squares. One, two, three, four, and then you can see sprinkled throughout the site by the bike rack. Down at the bottom of the page on Witherspoon Lane, we have a bollard and a few bollards at the end of the parking lot. There, and then there's existing lighting on the back of the existing building that we did test foot candle levels throughout the parking lot that will remain suitable, which was, you know, concurred by your staff review, so. From a lighting standpoint, we're definitely focused on down cutoff fixtures that are, you know, light pollution sensitive, et cetera. And it's really minimal additions in that regard. Just to take a look at my list and see if there's anything.
Uh, two, two things while you're looking, I, I think we caught it, but there was a, a comment about opening up the gates between the fences in the back for fire access. Something we're agreeable to.
Right, yeah.
And while perhaps not a civil engineering question, but might as well get it out now, but the, the, the plan is for this not to be condominiumized, this would be rental units here. There was a, a, a comment on the parking in terms of deed, or, or, you know, restricting to a condo unit. Make sure they have a deed space, certainly that makes sense, but our, our plan is to, to have these be rental units.
And I did want to add, just on a technical note, you know, for the record, that one comment in front of the rear of the existing building where the ADA stall is, we have a compact stall there at sixteen feet in depth right in front of that door. Right there, and the suggestion was, can you make it fifteen and make the landing one foot wider? And I think we can certainly do that, that's not an issue, so we'll, we'll agree to that. Making that minor change and increasing the width there. I think we've covered a little, just about all the engineering comments, and if there's anything else or, you know, any other questions, we can address that as well.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, just real quickly, would you make the ADA parking stall EV equip it with the, an EV charger or make it EV ready? Seems like that's a sort of a basic access issue too. I, I don't, I don't know whether that complicates things, whether one could park, whether that's too competing. Uh, like priorities.
I'm, I'm remembering being befuddled with that back and forth for a, a recent project on Mount Lucas. I think we'd be amiable to, to pre-wiring or, or having that be an, an option. But we'll have to just check our notes to see whether having it as an EV space makes it a problem for an ADA accessible space. You know, as far as access, that you're not going to tow someone who is not a Tesla driving, you know, ADA user, to make sure that that is compatible, but otherwise, that's, I think it's a good idea.
Uh, okay, who, who's next, Mr. Kennedy?
With that, I'd like to introduce the perhaps needs no introduction.
Right, maybe could you go back to the trash enclosure just for a second? I, I think there's a little bit of a confusion of whether the trash enclosure is a fence or a accessory structure. Do you want to briefly talk about that now or?
Sure, and, and Jim can, can, you know, confirm this, but there are two different ways of looking at the enclosure here. Fences have certain height requirements and accessory structures have height requirements and the ability to be a certain distance for a setback that, that recent changes this year or recently for, on accessory structures allows you to be five feet and up to ten feet in height. So as an accessory structure, we're certainly good. As a fence, we, we can be good or would be good. I think that the message here is that we will be compliant and, and not need a, a variance for this location to put a a, a trash enclosure here and have it look appropriately. Jim, did I get close to that?
I think, I think that's accurate, and I would say that from some of the other applications that we've had. We've seen the zoning officer interpret this as an accessory structure and thus necessitating a five-foot setback when we hadn't had it on other projects, we needed variance relief, but here we provided it. So I think that 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 context should be congruent with, you know, past interpretation and with what Ryan said relative to those requirements, it would meet the height requirement and the setback requirement.
Right, and it partly explains the funny shape of this accessory structure that we worked around the, the five feet here and the five feet there, so we created a a sort of two hands hiding the trash enclosures that are you don't see the trash and you meet all the requirements, so that, that explains why it's such an interesting shape.
And then but the good, one of the good byproducts of that is that if, while I think the municipal doesn't currently have a a, a food waste program, but if, if one of the users subscribes to TerraCycle or another local hauler that, that does that, there is a place for it and there's room for it there, that, that could be accommodated as well.
Yeah, yeah, so just wanted to make sure we didn't lose our port parking trash enclosure, there we go.
So with, with that, I'd like to introduce George to reintroduce himself and briefly give his credentials so we could talk about the thinking and accessibility we did at, at the rear of the site here to make sure that it worked for, for cars and, and fire apparatus.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chairman, those of the planning board. As you know, I've been testifying in front of the Princeton Planning Board since the mid-eighties. And I am a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, principal with BFJ Planning, I'm responsible for transportation and parking at BFJ Planning. Is that okay? Am I?
Yes, sir, we, we accept your qualifications, thank you, Mr. Jackmar.
Thank you, thank you. One of the first questions that I tried to resolve to answer is if we do maintain, if we were to maintain the existing driveway at the northerly part of the site, could a fire truck come in and exit that way? And so we tested the two large fire trucks that the Princeton Fire Company has. The Tower sixty is the largest one, the Tower sixty can't even get into the parking lot. But the ladder sixty can get in here, you can see the the turning path for the ladder sixty truck. However, that truck could not make it around the corner of the building and exit through the driveway, so that was, and that kind of conclusion then confirmed with us, you know, that we should eliminate that driveway, we should take out that conflict that exists today between the cars exiting and the pedestrians on the Witherspoon Street sidewalk. So this shows the ladder sixty truck entering the parking lot. The next slide shows the ladder sixty truck exiting again. A rear kind of maneuver to exit and then get on to Witherspoon Street from there. We did send this to the fire marshal, he, he was satisfied that this is an adequate situation to fight any fire here in the new apartments or the existing commercial building. The next slide shows another conflict that we tried to address, so the the telecommunications equipment that's in that is surrounded with a, a, a brick wall that basically creates a kind of a dead point for pedestrians along the sidewalk. So it's something that we see very often, you know, when we have an exit out of a garage onto a sidewalk. And so where we either try to keep the pedestrians away, or in this case, what we suggest is that there be a triangular raised island, and that's the cross-hatched area that you can see here of about, that has six feet at the level of the sidewalk. So keeping the cars six feet away from that brick wall will provide enough of what I call a sight cone for the driver to see the pedestrian that is on the sidewalk. So it's something that we recommend that, you know, to, to make this a fairly safe maneuver for vehicles exiting. You know, vis a vis the pedestrians that are on the sidewalk. And so we here have only eighteen feet for entrance and exit, which is typically enough for two cars to pass each other, even, you know, could For two cars to pass each other, even, you know, could even be a a truck in the car. Um that that is sufficient. Large vehicles, as you saw from the drawing with the fire truck, those vehicles can drive over. This triangular island, it would be mountable, so they can the drive over that um. And getting, you know, we may as well talk about the twenty-four foot aisle in the parking um. That was raised, you know, could that be narrowed in order to provide a little bit more space for the landscaping? Um the twenty-four feet that we have in typical. Uh parking lots, ninety-degree parking lots are not there because we need it for the circulation along the circulation aisle. You know, because we know for two-way circulation, we can. Easy have driveways of eighteen feet, you know, twenty feet. We have a number of roads in in Princeton that. Uh the two-lane roads that are only twenty feet wide. But we typically need the twenty-four feet for vehicles to get in and out of the parking stalls. Now, the question is, could we live with? Something less than twenty-four feet? I think yes. Uh you know, there are codes that have uh less than twenty-four feet. Uh there are municipalities that have that occasionally. Um the twenty-four foot is a kind of a standard in a shopping center, you know, where we have a a lot of movements in and out and so on. Uh that uh and I think in this case, because uh these are all long-term parkers, either the residents that live there or the employees working in the commercial building. We could uh reduce the twenty-four feet. To about twenty-two feet, but I would not go less than twenty-two feet. Because we also have the condition of the eight-and-a-half-foot spaces, you know, the widths of the spaces also play a factor in that. So to answer the question of Mr. Cohen, I I would say, yes, we could reduce, take another two feet out of here. And add it to the landscaping strip. Um talking, uh the next graphic. Oh, here we show how a car can still get into that uh uh compact space that's across the aisle from the. Uh wall and and that raised triangular island, so that there's still a a relatively easy maneuver to get in and out there. And then the next slide shows. How a passenger car comes, can come in, and let's say the the parking lot is completely full. How that passenger car can make a hammerhead turn, you know, at the end of this parking lot by backing into the. Cross-hatched area uh related to the ADA space and then move out again. We don't expect this to happen uh on any frequent basis. Um talking about the parking. Um, you know, there are twenty-three spaces. And that satisfies the zoning requirement, you know, two of them are E V spaces. Um so we think that that there's a, you know, there's enough parking there. We also recommend to the applicant. That they um provide permits, parking permits, so that there would be a sign that says. Uh parking permit by permit only. And the residents would get the permit, and then the uh office, uh the employees in the commercial space would have a permit. And they can park either way. So there's also flexibility in terms of using the. Electric uh E V charger and so on. So it provides greater flexibility rather than trying to assign spaces. So with the permit system, you know, you there could also be visitors in the evening that could park in there. The when the office, the commercial parkers uh will not be uh parking in the lot. So that's for parking. Um. The, you know, as as I mentioned, you know, we we are very happy that we can take out the driveway. On the northerly end here and, you know, create a pedestrian path and and really improve pedestrian conditions along along the sidewalk. Um. Um, the last thing I want to address is the bicycle parking. Uh, you know, there's the long-term parking that's required by your code is all provided in the. Uh enclosure that's uh pointed out to here. At the northerly part of the site, that includes also the one long-term space required for the commercial uh uses. And then the short-term parking, as was indicated earlier, for bicycles. Uh are in the front of the existing commercial building. There are two locations where there stands for uh. Uh bicycle parking. I think that addresses um all my uh presentation. Traffic, uh as was also noted by your consultant, is, you know, minimal, uh very insignificant impact. It's a range of one to two vehicles in the peak hour, uh so it's very insignificant in this case. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jacques Mar. I know earlier, well, we have uh uh Victor Anasoke from um uh. Our traffic consultants here. I don't believe you were sworn in earlier. Mister Anasoke, but I'm wondering whether. Do you have any comments uh that you would like to make at this point? Here, there we go.
Yes. No, I.
So if you do have comments, we should swear you in first. Martina?
Um, do you swear or firm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
I do.
Just one, thanks. Please just state, spell your name for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Victor Anosike, last name A N O S I K E.
Great, go right ahead.
Um, I think the the few comments I had were addressed. Uh in testimony by Jim, uh. The one clarification I was seeking to get was. The um. Garbage collection process for the residents. When they leave their homes. How do they get the garbage to the trash area? And that was why we had made, I made that comment about connecting. The sidewalk to that area.
Right.
Are they? Are they, are they carrying this garbage in the bags? Or are they willing out? Uh. Uh cans to get to that point?
Um. Our understanding is that they would, on an as-needed basis, use the communal or shared. Three-yard containers within the trash enclosure area. And that would be, you know, provided um for the re- the four residential units' use as well as. Um. The existing building. And Ryan, can you just highlight? The path of travel going from Unit D up towards the bicycle room? To the left. Down that curb ramp and then across the parking lot. That would, that's the intention of the pedestrian movement there, so that we can maintain. The amount of parking we need, but still deliver them to the paved surface. With the, an ADA ramp, you know, a a depressed curb. Um at the end of that sidewalk.
So Jim, if I heard you right, there would be a, they'd be bringing their their bag and put it in the three-yard uh.
Right.
Um container.
Recycling, so you know, that that ADA parking area would largely be. You know, open a lot of the time as well, so they would be free to move from that. Depressed curb over to the left and to the the enclosure.
And you're, you're saying that the connection. Of that sidewalk. To that area is not feasible. Because you you tell me, uh they they stop at the middle of the, of the drive R and they cross. To. To the uh ADA aisle.
Right.
To get to that point. I I was just thinking, if there's a way to. Have them circle around away from the parking lot itself.
Well, the the problem with that. Mister Anasaki is that around the parking area, we do have some topographic constraints. The. The slope does go up several feet. Within that green area at the end of the parking lot, so. There are some topographic challenges there. But we we still feel that we need that bump out for the vehicles to to back out and egress from the parking area. So that's the one challenge with. Continuing a sidewalk. All the way around the parking area to the trash enclosure. From a constraint standpoint.
Could you mark it with? Paint or with a different materials or something, or would that violate the rules of how you're supposed to do the cross-hatched area for? ADA accessible?
And I think if we can live with the aesthetics of that, maybe with a. You know, some surface painting, if that's acceptable, that. Uh is in harmony with the color of the pavers, just to guide the pedestrian on how to cross. To the striped area, even though, you know, it's on an angle, so that's not ideal, but if that's a desire. You know, we can look at doing something like that.
And I think the clearer. I mean, i- in the absence of. I mean, understanding the constraints that are in place, it it seems to me that whatever can be done to make clear to. Uh people with garbage bags and people with bikes, for that matter, here's, here's how you get from. Your, your place to. The garbage enclosure or even to Witherspoon Street, you know, it's sort of, it's a wayfinding thing. It makes things clear for cars and for. People with bikes and on foot, and I don't know how others think about this. Mr. Cohen is probably. Got good opinion.
I was going to make the same suggestion before you brought it up, Louise.
Yeah, because if if there's a car parked at the ADA spot. Uh and somebody walks up from the residential area. Um, then then they will need to find a way to get across.
Yep. Yeah.
I think, but I particularly with with bikes, I mean, this will be the path for bike storage. I'm guessing that with the number of cars we're expecting, which we we think to be low, frankly, um. I would imagine that most of unit owners would probably proceed directly the the the, as the crow flies, rather than. Come all the way up and and around, but uh certainly marketing for for bikes, that that is the way bikes would go. So that that makes a lot of sense.
It's also the safer route for bikes and pedestrians. I mean, Witherspoon Lane is really narrow. Um and uh so it's just going to be tight if cars are coming in and out. I mean, I know that this does not generate a lot of traffic. I'm not trying to make that. Point, but I just think that separate, you know, giving bikes and pedestrians a really clear signal about their route. Uh a route that's theirs and theirs alone is a really good. Idea.
Okay, we can add that.
I think the the other comment I. I had, and uh this is not more like a. A consideration on your part. Is um regarding ADA. Uh accessibility. Uh from your concept points, I see that each of the four units have like stairs in front. Uh I was just wondering. And it looks like it's all sloped towards the Unit D. Uh Unit A has maybe five spy flights, B four, something like that, and it's debrining down. So I was wondering if Unit D, is it possible to at least provide one? One of the units that will have some kind of ADA accessibility?
So uh that's a a really good comment, you know, we 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 talked about that today. Now, granted. The units themselves, you know, it's it's a very small floor plate and, you know, there there wouldn't be a way to traverse between floors easily. Uh but um we're thinking uh par- particularly with the addition of the the gates, the ability to have guests. To that unit that we will, we would work on figuring out a way uh to get, you know, whether it's, you know, uh an accessible backyard. Barbecue or something like that, that that would happen. We 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 believe that the the grading, uh and Jim, correct me if I'm overstepping here, but in in the back is particularly. Conducive to 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 doing that, um and would likely be a guest scenario. Uh is that? Uh you or Marina want to speak to that a little bit?
I I can speak to that. So I uh uh thank you for that comment, and we um. We are dealing with the change in topography, sort of going in two directions. What? Actually is working really well for us is the backyards are practically at grade. So we have entrances on both end-unit backyards that are um through the garden. Um above the bicycle. Ryan, can you point to the gate above the bicycle? Yeah, there you go. So somebody as a guest, as a guest in a wheelchair could. Uh come through the garden gate and attend a party in the backyard and be able to access the ground floor. Of the unit that way, rather than us trying to create a ramp up front, trying to deal with the slope that that would be a very complicated. Um. Sloping situation over there. Uh because if you go to that parking lot right now, you notice that the lower parking lot is actually, the one that's to the building is lower. And then the upper is high, and you kind of drive up. Um so we're mitigating that slope with all of those front steps, but the backyard's already on grade. So we have a good solution for that, uh since there are no internal elevators provided, having access to the first floor. Basically allows guests um to to come or um. You know, and participating in first-floor activities. Hopefully, that that answers your question.
One other strategy, um which we can talk about later if. If you want, but. Uh on the, in the lower right corner of the image, the the large, the the. Circle that indicates a large tree. Um I am pretty sure. I'm ninety-eight percent sure that that is a very large ilanthus, very large tree of heaven. Um, there's a white fence underneath it, a sort of pasture-style fence, not picket or. Um.
I know exactly the one.
Fortress or whatever, but that fence is totally. Uh gross because of everything that drips on it from the Tree of Heaven. I mean, and and so. Um. I personally, you know, as much as I love trees, would have no issue whatsoever with getting rid of that one, uh even though it's a big one and um. Uh and and maybe that frees up some access um. Point to the backyard from from that direction as well. Oh, of course. Well, you're already proposing to plant more trees than are required, so. Maybe you'd be doing everybody a favor except the spotted lanternflies if you remove that tree.
I I don't think we would have any problems if.
Excellent, excellent thought.
Felt that that tree should go, I don't, Howard, I don't think you would have an issue with. Getting rid of some lanternflies, right?
That's correct.
I mean, I assume the fence was going to go anyway.
Right.
Um and speaking of invasive species, um a- along that fence on the um parking lot side. There are um clumps of um. Perennial grasses, I guess, uh uh. A- a- and and in amongst those choking some of them out is a whole bunch of English ivy that you should also get rid of.
Okay.
Well, um, thank you, Mr. Anosike. Did you have any, anything else?
Yeah. Yes, just one more.
Okay.
Yes, two more. Uh I believe Jim testified that the wheel stops. That are currently provided are the parking spaces behind the. Existing commercial buildings will be retained. Or. Improved. Am I correct, Jim?
Well, yeah, we're not, we're not proposing to change any of that there.
Okay, so the i- is is this going to be extended to the? Uh ADA parking space, the new one?
I think, I think on the new ADA space, I had a bollard-type sign.
Right. Right.
Like the vehicular, you know, restraint at that location, and it. May be better than having something on the ground there for a tripping hazard. That was the thought.
Okay, so the 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 wheel stop will not be at at that look, at that parking spot. Okay, that's it. Because I I saw the ball light and the sign is mounted on the concrete pit ball, and I was wondering. Why, why the two measures?
Right.
You know, okay, that's, that's fine. And this, this, the final comment I have, and this is just from my own. Uh it really has nothing to do with traffic, but just my experience in building. Um, the stairs in front, um. I know you you have the architect probably will have more insight in this. The the stairs have this, you have this four-step uh rule where. You have anywhere more than four stairs or flights, you have to provide a a rail or. Or some kind of protection on the sides. I- is it, is it, does it apply here or not? I I was just looking at your concept. Uh rendations, and I I just thought I I I will remark on that.
Um, any railings that will have to be provided will absolutely be provided. We have a variety, as you could see, it changes, so. At the moment, we're not showing them, but absolutely where they will be required, they will be provided.
Okay. That's all I have.
Sorry about that. Um, Owen has had his hand up and then Justin.
Yeah, uh, one quick question from Mr. Jackamar. Um, Witherspoon Lane, I, I'm, you know, sorry, I should know this for all the times that I've been by there. Is that a one-way street?
No, it's a two-way street.
It is a two-way street. I, I, it, it's such a narrow street and I've only seen cars going off of, uh, Witherspoon Street onto it. So, so thank you for.
Extreme traffic calming.
Yes, yes, uh, but I'm also just wondering about, you know, a car coming out of the driveway and trying to get into the driveway at the same time. There's enough room for. Two cars to maneuver.
Well, in theory, yes, but you know, they are in a turning maneuver over that eighteen feet, so I'm sure if. Uh, there's a car exiting, another car coming, one of them will have to wait. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to follow up on the response to Mr. Anasik's question to make sure I'm understanding. Uh, the question was if there could be a ramp to unit D instead of one step. And the solution was for someone in a wheelchair. Or with other, you know, limited means of mobility. To go on the grass between the fence. You know, you're shown eight feet between the fence and the bicycle room. Uh, with trees. And there's trees in the rear too. So some of the wheelchair is supposed to traverse that to get to the rear. Uh, you know, to enter the house through the rear first off. And to get in the house. Uh, I'm just making sure I'm understanding.
I think what we're suggesting is that these homes being three stories with no internal stairs. I'm sorry, no internals elevator are not inherently wheelchair accessible. These are townhouses, so. It is not going to be a resident of this home. That will be using this every day. And if somebody came to a garden party or came to visit. There is a way to get through, like, uh, we do show gates on both ends, as you could see there, um. Uh, ranking point to the gates. Um, so one is at that location. Um, and as we just recently received this comments, without that could be a way to get around the topography. Um, if we feel that maybe some form of a pathway that would be useful, that we could certainly provide a pathway, more of a. Stepping stone or um, some kind of form of reinforcing the grass, we could certainly do that. Uh, what Louise was suggesting with on the opposite end, same condition where it's more or less on grade with that tree of heaven gone. That would certainly simplify matters. And again, if we feel that there would be um. A way, you know, a benefit to providing more of a path inside the garden, then I don't see any problem doing that. Uh, if we feel that that would be a good solution, especially on the, um, Witherspoon Lane side, that's a much shorter area. Um, that, that could definitely be a great pass, um, reinforcing the, the ground cover. Or sorry, not ground cover, but grass. So if we think that that's a good way to go, I think, um, Jim, hopefully you won't object to. Putting a little path um, to get in and out that way.
Uh, uh, maybe Jim can, can just speak up to the, the, the topo. Uh, changes on the side, because you know, we, we would like to make this work. It's, it's, it's not the resistance to wanting to have a solution here. It's a.
Right, so to just briefly add that, uh, we have a step going out of the house onto the landing and then at least one more step. So that would be approximately, you know, eighteen inches. For an eighteen inches, we need an eighteen-foot long ramp. We just don't have room. Or something like that. So we're trying to think of what, where are we already on grade? That we could help that guest come and be able to join the party and um, come to the ground floor. Um, so that, those are the two suggestions we came up with, but if there are other um, more workable suggestions, by all means, we're definitely open to them.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Weissman and then Mr. McGowan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just had a, a question regarding, uh, the consideration for narrowing the drive aisle. Um, I believe there was an exhibit that showed the first two spaces as you're coming in from Witherspoon Lane. Um, they're compact cars. And it seemed to be a pretty tight maneuver to get in there. Now, if that, if that uh. Side of the drive aisle shifted two feet, how does that affect a compact car getting into that first space?
The compa-, well, there are two ways. One, the compact car, if needed, can drive over that mountable triangular island. Number one, number two, the car, the, the maneuver may be, would be easier if they reverse into that space. So if you imagine the car coming in and reversing, that would be fairly easy to do, uh, in this particular case. So, um. I think, you know, it, it's a compromise, uh, but I, I think it would be acceptable, you know, to, to narrow that twenty-four foot. Widths, you know, to twenty-two. Uh, I've seen conditions, I, I've seen parking lots where it's only twenty feet. Uh, I, I would not recommend that, uh, especially when we have spaces that are eight and a half feet wide. Uh, but twenty-two, twenty-two feet would be acceptable in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGowan?
Related to some of the, the, the parking issues that have been raised, um. Is it, has it, have you considered the parking? For the business that's, that's there. I, you know, there's not much parking, I, I don't think on, on. Witherspoon Street necessarily. It seems that as though cars would want to come in and, and park. Behind there to be able to, to get inside the building. The, as related to that. Um. Would there be any, any truck traffic? I mean, I know, again, it's clothing business. But, but do, you know, does that business? Are there materials that go in? Are there suits that go out? Or, or there are other, are there, again, is, is that going to? Sort of, you know, again, affect? Access? And e- egress to, uh, through the parking lot? And is it going to take up spaces that, that the business would otherwise? Be using? So those are the.
Yes, good question. Um, so in terms of the parking demand generated by the commercial spaces, you know. That is included in the twenty-three space calculation, uh, that we provided. So that typically. Uh, the employees, uh, that are working in that building, uh, today and in the future, they would park, they would be part of that. Uh, demand, uh, in the parking lot. Um, and that's how we calculated the to- total demand for two, uh, twenty-three spaces. Now, some of the shoppers that may go into the clothing store, they may park somewhere on streets, you know, there is on-street parking in the area, not on this particular side. In front of the buildings, uh, but, uh, you know, typically the, the shoppers tend to use the on-street parking, um. So that's how I see the, the shoppers that go into the commercial space, uh, where they would park. Now deliveries, I'm sure there are deliveries and, you know, UPS, FedEx and, uh. They may drive into the parking lot and, uh, kind of double park behind a, uh, and a commercial vehicle. To, uh, load and unload and then leave again. They may do that also on, on Witherspoon Lane. I mean, that's how they do it today in general, I think. Um, and, and that's how it would happen in the future. A moving truck would probably drive into the parking lot and so that there may be more moments when you have a moving truck there that, you know, would block. Some of these parking spaces for a while, but that's basically the, the nature a little bit, how, how that would hap- would happen.
Uh, does that answer your question, Mr. McGowan satisfactorily?
Pretty much. It, it's just, it's just a concern, but I, I got, I have an answer still. I still have something of a concern that. You know, as far as that business goes. With, and then once you have. Tenants. And, and, and other, that's what I, and coming up Witherspoon Lane is, again, it's going to be really narrow, getting in, getting in and out of there. And if there's. See, it just seems like you'd be blocked fairly easily.
Perhaps I'll, I'll direct a, a question to, 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 um, to our expert, because, uh, the, in addition to the, the calculation you did for onsite spaces. Uh, I, I believe the ownership is, um, while they've been significantly overparked with the tenants that are there now and, and adding just four units. Have actually also, um, acquired a, a considerable amount of off-site parking for them, just, uh, you know, in, in case more was needed. Um, they, they have kind of maxed out what is, uh, permitted to be, uh, rented essentially, uh, at adjacent sites for employees. Uh, for example, um, and, and they, they've done that and particularly for construction times, um, uh, to make sure that's, that's not a problem, but they. Have, uh, taken advantage of a, as much as possible, though, a, as of yet, it's really been. Un, unneeded and, and significantly overparked.
Yeah, I think during the day, you know, um, because we do have shared parking. Uh, during the day, there will, uh, likely be some of the residence spaces will be empty, so that there will be room for. A, uh, at least a smaller delivery vehicle to put into a parking space if needed. Uh, but we also, you know, we see that in many parking lots, where you see the UPS or FedEx truck, you know, they, they park behind a. A parked vehicle for ten minutes, run in and out, and then they get out again. Um, I think in terms of the width of the, uh, Witherspoon Lane, if I remember correctly, it's sixteen feet curb to curb. Uh, but as you saw, it is wide enough for a fire truck to get in and out, you know, that, uh, sixteen feet, you know, typically. When we have a one, a narrow one-way street, let's say, and we want to be sure that a, a car and a. Truck can pass each other, we, we require a minimum of sixteen feet, you know. Cars typically are six to seven feet wide, trucks tend to be eight to nine feet wide, and so that, that would work. It's not ideal. But that's how it works in a situation like this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just want to. Ask a question related to Alvin's question, which is, uh, in the, um. Photography, the aerial photography that we saw as part of the presentation, it did look like the parking lot was. Half-full, which in light of the fact that. Uh, half of it's going away. We may be really close to, uh, the parking need and may, and may have times when there's not enough parking. So the question I wanted to ask is, you know, have, has the owner been renting spaces? To other businesses that account for some of that, because I know. You know, our parking requirements tend to be a little overly generous, uh, in Princeton usually. So I, I'm wondering if there's an explanation, um, that anyone can offer for why the parking lot was as full as it was. Uh, in those aerial views.
Did you want me, this is.
Yeah, Howard, Howard, if you could, and I put the slide up that shows it's, it's the spaces that are furthest away from the building that were, uh, in the picture Mr. Cohen was, uh, talking about.
So, Mr. Cohen, um, good question, um. I do not really enforce, um, the use of my lot. Um, so there are people who are parked in my lot who don't belong there. Um, quite often. Um, and so I think that particular day, m- most likely people are, are visiting Delicioso. Um, I know local law enforcement likes to park there on occasion, um, and they like to go next door, so. Um, because I have such a surplus and because it's empty, I think people just take it upon themselves to park there and. I don't really enforce it because I do have such surplus and I, I don't really. Care, for lack of a better term, um, because it's not affecting the business.
That works.
But, yeah, I mean.
That, that definitely answers the question. And then, then just a, a last comment on that is that I think the residential. And the commercial parking needs tend to dovetail nicely where the, they're not at the same time of day. So that is something that should also be reassuring, uh, in terms of being plenty of parking here.
Also, if I could add one more comment, um, when I'm late for meetings, my conference room is on the Witherspoon Street side. There is metered parking right in front, and when I do not have time, I pull up across the street and I walk through my front door, so. There is public parking that is on the Witherspoon Street side and, and some people do enter through the front building. My clients particularly like to do that.
Sure.
They can enter both ways, but, uh, and I'm sure Mr. Hilton gets the same.
Yeah. Um, thanks, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Minmod. Um, Mr. Walker, do you have anything to add from the? First responders perspective to? Any of these, I, I assume that these issues have been dealt with to your satisfaction with regard to, uh. Apparatus and, you know, access and whatnot.
Yes, thank you. I, I appreciate the traffic engineers, uh, pointing out the fire truck access and, uh, we're totally okay with. Uh, having the backup of the, the lot if there'd be an emergency.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I do have other comments, but I'll, I'll wait till the end.
Okay, um, Mr. Kennedy, do you have any other expert witnesses?
Just our planning testimony, Madam Chair, so if, if.
Go ahead with that.
Okay, Susan, if you want to introduce yourself, uh.
Sorry, Madam Chair, it's nine, nine fifteen. Do you want to take a five-minute, ten-minute break?
Um, thank you, Carrie. On behalf of the board, I had lost track of time. Okay, so by, my computer says it's nine oh eight. Uh, let's do take, um, take a break and be back, you know, um. Uh, nine fifteen or thereabouts.
And apologies, that reminds me that we have a few more slides before Susan. I, I, I skipped back in, uh, but we'll.
Okay.
Be short.
All right, so see you, see you all at nine fifteen. Thank you, Carrie. We're just, uh, waiting for a couple folks to get back after our break. Mr. O'Donnell, are you there by chance? I know we're still waiting for. Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Taylor. There's Owen. Uh, everybody, if you'll just, um. Bear with us. I do want to make sure that Mr. Taylor, there we go. Okay, Mr. Kennedy, um, you said you want, you have a few more slides?
Yes, uh, so let me, I'll, we'll return to our show here and, um. Uh, talk a little bit more about the, the site layout. Marina, you want to pick up here on slide thirty-one?
Yes, yes, I think this is a good segue into the next sort of a good transition where, um. This wonderful idea of creating room, um, more room for the trees, and thank you, David, who speaks for the trees. Um, we thought that, um, one more time to sort of explain the pedestrian, um, friendly idea here is what we're trying to achieve. Is this sort of layering effect? And as you could see, it's what's happening on Witherspoon Street where there's cars, then there's. Oh, I'm, you can't see my cursor, so Ryan, you're going to have to be pointing. Uh, so on, on the front facade of the existing building. A one picture below, yeah, so it's the same configuration and we really think that that's. So it's the same configuration, and we really think that that's what makes pedestrians feel protected. Having some green space between them and the trees. Um, so next slide is um, demonstrating it's sort of how we arrived at this balancing act. Back and forth of how to locate the building, so the red outline is taking the building and shifting it. To the um, compliant location, which would eliminate two sets of variances. This would eliminate setback variances, and it would also eliminate, as you know, we have the correct size. Of the open space requirement, but the open space requirement, the way the ordinance is written requires a certain minimum dimension, and in one dimension, we weren't. Meeting it. So if we were to shift the building forward towards Witherspoon Street, that would be west. Um, that we could be compliant, but it completely eliminates all that pedestrian circulation layering that we. Really, really feel that it's a really positive thing for both the residents. And the future development on the site, and also this connection to other possible things happening in the neighborhood.
Could you, I'm sorry to interrupt, could you show with the cursor which dimen- which. Dimension you're not meeting?
So, so there's a, a rear setback line that, yes, Ryan is pointing to, and also when you create an open space. Uh, designated to a unit, it has two components. One is the size of the open space, which we are meeting. And then another one, it's supposed to be a twenty, twenty foot by twenty foot, and we're twenty-three by smaller. So we're kind of a funny shape, so that.
Twenty, twenty-three wide by smaller.
Three foot, for the smaller ones in the middle, uh, we have twenty-three wide, but it's not quite. Big enough east-west. So it's, it's almost like. On one end, but it's not on the other end.
Yeah, i- it's almost like a layered setback. You've got a fifteen-foot setback, and we're very close to that, and if we shifted it, we'd make it. Um, but then there's a twenty-foot dimensional requirement, it's almost like a, a similar way of looking for setbacks, so the further. You shift the building left, then you, you meet those items, even though from a square footage perspective, we, we do hit it, we. And so, you know, from your classic C-two perspective, it would work, uh, but we feel this is a, a much better design. And perhaps if we can steal that extra two feet, um, that uh, one of you may have cleverly found for us that. We may uh, you know, come close to, to both, the, you know, the, the strong design. And uh, knocking out some of those variance conditions, so I, I think later on, we'd really love to hear. What, if we can find that two feet where you'd like to see it, because the, you know, the ordinance would say, put it in the back. Uh, but there may be some, some benefit to having uh, uh, in the front um, as well, so we'd love to hear that piece of it.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
I think David was gonna say something.
Oh, sorry, David, I did not, didn't see your hand, sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem. Um, yeah, I just would like, uh, you know. This argument is based on an assumption that the footprint of these units have to be exactly what is shown on the drawing. And could you talk a little bit about why this footprint is the right footprint and couldn't be shrunk?
Um, that's my next line.
Excellent question.
Thank you, such a perfect lead-in. Uh, yes, so absolutely, so uh, we have. Uh, width-wise, we only have a certain area to work with, and the, in the middle lots are supposed to be um, twenty feet. Minimum, and the end lots are supposed to be forty feet minimum, so we had a few extra feet, we had. Eight, eight extra feet in the lot, and we sort of distributed them, so we made all the units twenty-three feet wide. Um, for consistency and construction, and then the depth of the units is thirty-three feet and ten inches, and we feel that. That's not an overly large home. I've looked at several um, buildings in the neighborhood, both in Witherspoon Jackson. And also a typical um, Franklin um, Maple duplex, and all of those are forty-some feet deep. So we're trying to fit kind of a living space, a little bit of an entry, so that people can continue in that approach where you come in. There's a little bit of an entry space, a little powder room, um, a little space to put your coat. We do need a stair there somewhere. And then kitchen, living space, so we feel that thirty-three feet is not that deep of a. Building, um, so I've looked at um, multiple examples in Witherspoon Jackson and both um. In the tree streets where those attached dwellings are significantly deeper, and um. Could we possibly shrink it? Yeah, but not substantially enough to eliminate. Um, what we would have to do, we would have to shift the whole thing forward. Uh, but that, that's a good question. So we've worked really hard to, you see, like, we're trying to have no corridors. Be as efficient as we possibly can, because um, we're trying to use all of our footprint the best we can. Um, and again, trying to have large windows creates that sense of creating outdoor rooms. That these, you know, okay, your unit is only twenty-three feet by thirty-three feet, but you actually get that. Connection with nature and backyard, so it feels larger. Um. Um, Ryan, uh, with, yeah, so this is the picture, um, and also on the sides. The, we have consistent width of the units, but the end units, w- we felt that it was really important rather to have like a, a blank wall. Um, we don't want these to be sort of forgotten sides that nobody looks at, uh, we would like to really step it and engage it. With um, sort of future connections on the, on this side, hopefully the future connection to the Franklin lot. Um, so you see that we have that bicycle structure being one-story element, and then having other elements. Up in the building, start to activate that facade and engage with the sort of human scale. Things going on, and then on the next slide, we show um, the. Ryan, can you um, skip forward to the next slide? Right, so this is the facade facing Witherspoon Lane, where again. We have a lower volume. Element on the ground floor and other things kind of going and out playing with the facade, so it's not a. Kind of blank, boring, forgotten side, and this was the, where we really first struggled, like, how do we activate that facade? What do we do? What, uh, what, what could that be? And then um, Howard's idea of bringing in. Um, Ilya, the artist, to work with us on creating um, this landmark artwork on the corner. And we were hoping that Ilya would be able to join us today, because the way she speaks of her artwork is not me speaking about it, but. Um, for technical reasons, she wasn't able to join us today, but what we're proposing is that. Um, we have a separate meeting, we've reached out to um, community members, and we've reached out to the um. Paul Robson House to start uh, creating a way of Ilya to do a presentation and involved. Um, talk about her art, what are her thinking and inspiration ideas, so uh. I'm gonna talk a little bit about it, that for her, she thinks of Witherspoon Street as a river. And there are all these sort of things flowing and connecting, so we'll have to save that for a separate presentation and have her talk about it. But again, as you could see, we're trying to break that blank, sometimes buildings have kind of a side facade that's forgotten. And by doing that, it, it kind of creates a, a, a variance situation, so if we flip to the next slide.
Just real quickly for members of, oh, no, go ahead, uh, you're going exactly where I was going.
Thank you, right, so Ilya, uh, in case you, that's the picture of Ilya, can you find Ilya? Down in the bottom, uh, so her, everybody's probably, even if you don't know her personally, she's an incredible person. She's such a personality. I first met her while she was on the ladder, painting the mural on the side of the Terramomo Bread Company. And that mural is being um, coming down with the building whenever that's happening, so we think that. What an incredible coincidence that we have a way of bringing her work back on Witherspoon Street um. And um, sort of continuing the um, art in the community. And then in case anybody had any doubts, I'm sure nobody did, but the next slide shows her qualifications, where she's been. Um. Honored by Mercer County for many, many different murals that she has done, um, she has historic murals in Trenton. And she has done the, the one on Witherspoon Street, I think she has one in restaurants, so. Very, very well-established, um, well-known, community-connected artist, um, and again, we hope that to have a in-person meeting. Uh, because I think her work, not only her artwork is important in this case, but also her involvement with colors in the building was absolutely critical. So she um, talks a lot about that, and it, it's so much better to do when you can touch and feel and see. See her work.
And, and as a potential condition um, to the, the art being part of this project. You know, we certainly understand that there's a sometimes fine line between a sign under the ordinance and, and art. We'd certainly work with staff to make sure that the ultimately what is, um, what is done there is appropriate and is not a. Sign or, or trigger some type of variance, but is indeed fit the definition of uh, of public art like you might see elsewhere. Uh, I know it's a little difficult to confirm that, um, uh, you know, when it hasn't been designed yet, but we certainly would. Um, agree to a condition to make sure that that, that happens as part of that process.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not something I would, okay, great, so I think that concludes. Um, me filling you in on Ilya's um, work, and then I am happy to pass it on to Susan.
Thank you, Marina. Um, and now I, I, I started before our break, and I'll, I'll let her actually start now, uh, Susan, if you could introduce yourself and. Uh, to the board and, and briefly go through your credentials as a planner, we could uh, uh, talk about the, the buckets of variances that we're, uh. Gonna talk about tonight.
Sure, sure. Uh, I'm Susan Pavadi, I'm a principal of BFA Planning, uh, partners with George, so I've been hearing about Princeton for many, many years. Uh, I have over seventeen years of professional planning experience, uh, which includes appearing before a number of boards here in New Jersey. I am a licensed New Jersey professional planner, as well as uh, certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Uh, and active in the um, American Planning Association chapters, both in New Jersey and Metro New York. Um, I also serve on my local planning board in Chatham Borough, I've been on that board for over fourteen years and have been chair for almost uh, ten. So I've been on your side as well, um, and I can keep going, but.
Oh, no. Uh, we accept your qualifications, thank you.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I'm just gonna speak for a few moments about uh, the various variances that you've been hearing about sort of all night. I'm talking a little about the requested relief and, and how our plan is consistent with various master planning documents as well as the MLUL. Um, so you've heard about um, the number of variances, and you've seen it in the press, professional reports. Um, so I'll, I will zero in on those right now, um, so we, we have the setbacks, but you just heard about. Um, we've got uh, this two side yard setbacks, both uh, to the north and south of the proposed building. Um, the north end is the bike enclosure that's triggering the majority of that setback, and in the southern end, it's the utility uh, structure, which is. Triggering most of that setback, so uh, for the most part, um, those setbacks are, are occurring, or the encroachments are occurring. Uh, for non-livable space, uh, whether it's the bike room or the utility room, um, so we do feel that the impacts to the proposed. Or the future residents of this building will be fairly minimal, um, and you saw in those renderings as well, that the setbacks are not uniform. Whether they're side, rear, or front, um, they're not uniform vertically, um, Marina, I think has worked really hard to create, as you've been hearing, some alternating. Um, you know, facade treatments, so it, it's not like a sheer wall that's occurring in a setback. Um, but regarding those, those side yard setbacks, it is, it is again, non-livable space. Um, on the, the rear setback, I think you heard that we, you know, we are within that rear setback because of the configuration of the building and, you know, the desire to balance. Um, you know, providing meaningful design up front, uh, meaningful pedestrian connections, landscaping, you know, room for those sorts of things to occur. Um, I think you saw in Marina's slide that we could eliminate that rear setback by pushing the whole building forward, but I think in that case, you'd be looking at. What would truly be a parking lot, surrounded building, or a building just popped out in the parking lot, I think we've tried to avoid that. Um, and really be thoughtful in the design to create more of a pedestrian environment. Um, on the parking uh, variances, there are two, they're both the uh, the location of the parking as well as the size. Um, so the size of the parking, we are proposing eight-and-a-half foot width, uh, which is uh, smaller than required by your code, I think that that's entirely consistent. With and appropriate with the use of this site, these are users who will be very familiar with this parking lot, they'll be using it on a daily basis. It's very appropriate to have smaller, uh, smaller parking spaces that are more efficient and can reduce the amount of impervious coverage on this site. And I think it's consistent with, with what you all have uh, looked at elsewhere in Princeton. On the uh, location of the parking lot, we are uh, requesting relief from the requirement or regulation that prohibits. Parking from being in a front yard, um, and that's somewhat unique, this is a unique site, um, clearly the parking lot is in between these two buildings. Um, it is occurring technically in the front yard of the new building, I think the intent of that regulation is primarily to preserve uh, pedestrian street front. Um, which here would be Witherspoon Street, um, so there is really no impact on the Witherspoon Street frontage. This parking lot for the new proposed building would be behind the existing commercial building, um, so I think it's, it's respecting the spirit of that uh, regulation. Uh, and there's really not a way to have this configuration of this proposal without having the parking lot here in a shared way. Um, that really maximizes that efficiency between the two uses on the site. Um, the open space you just heard about from Marina, uh, we are uh, in keeping with the square footage requirement uh, of open space for each of these four units. However, we are under that one dimension, uh, the twenty feet, so again, I think here, we're, we're adhering to the, the spirit of the regulation, if not the, the letter. Um, and I think you also saw that if, if this building were shifted forward, we could meet both of those open space requirements, but the, the sacrifice would be at the front. Of that building, and, and you would lose a lot of that landscaping and pedestrian infrastructure uh, at the front of the building. Um, on building coverage, we are slightly over uh, of the percent building coverage. Um, but we are entirely occurring within the existing parking lot, um, so this is not, uh, this is not a green. Uh, undeveloped site, it is, you know, infill development, we are putting it in the parking lot and actually reducing the total amount of impervious coverage. Uh, so we do feel that that, you know, that, that is a fairly minor variance uh, being requested. Think. There was also mention of a design waiver um, in one of the memos, and I think that was because of the parking, the turning movements. And I think you saw from George's testimony that we, we do feel that that works because of the configuration of the ADA space. So I don't think that that design waiver uh, is perhaps necessary, I think we've shown that the turning movements work. Okay, um, so I will turn to um, the, the, the proofs, you know, we are, I think as, as Ryan sort of referenced earlier, we are. Seeking a C-two variance um, under the MLUL criteria, and, and as you all know, I'm sure from your. Your uh, previous applications with C-two variances, there are, there are a couple prongs to this variance. Relief uh, being requested, um, you know, the public benefits test, you have to show that the granting of these variances uh, will adhere to the purposes of the MLUL. It means the land use law, uh, and that the benefits substantially outweigh any potential detriments. Um, we do feel that we've shown that uh, throughout this testimony, you see here just a few of the benefits of this proposal. And there's an overall reduction of impervious coverage, this is an, a prime infill development site. Um, that is providing, you know, different housing options, you know, diversity in housing options. Uh, in a walking distance to all kinds of neighborhood amenities, as well as shopping uh, and work and, and local schools and parks. Um, it is a very pedestrian-friendly design, as you just saw from Marina's slides. Um, the entire design of the site, as well as the connection to the, the surrounding pedestrian network. It will create um, more of a place from Witherspoon Lane through the creation of public art. Uh, and architectural design that really looks at the entire, um, the entire building, all four facades, that there are no blank. Sort of backs sides that, that are, you know, less attractive than, than the rest, you really do see a whole cohesive architectural treatment here. Um, and in terms of green and sustainable measures, we are providing a, a number of those, as you heard earlier through testimony, the two EV charging spaces. Um, the future solar panels on the roof, uh, and the use of green materials and green construction methods. And then this lastly does represent, uh, you know, a true holistic planning exercise, we do think. Um, there are short-term constraints due to the, you know, existing leases of the building in the front, but when those constraints are perhaps. Um, not in existence anymore, that portion of the site is ripe uh, for future development. That, you know, creates more of a cohesive overall mixed-use uh, site. Um, so we, we do feel that the benefits of this application, you know, strongly outweigh any detriments and, and any requested variance relief. Um, looking at the negative criteria of the statute for C-two variances, um, whether the granting of these variances creates any detriment to the public good. Uh, we don't feel that it does, we actually feel quite the opposite, that you, again, we're providing a number of benefits, not just to these. Uh, we don't feel that it does. We actually feel quite the opposite, um, that you, again, we're providing a number of benefits, not just to these residents and just to the site, but really as part of the overall, um, you know, positive planning approach and smart growth approach, um, that I think is consistent with, um, with all of your planning efforts. And then lastly, uh, part of the negative criteria that that this, these variances can be granted without detriment to, um, you know, your master plan and MLUL. We we did look at, uh, your various planning documents and there are many. Um, you know, the last full master plan, as you all know, that that Princeton undertook was back in nineteen ninety-six. Uh, and that really had an overall goal, which I don't think has substantially changed really in any of the documents that we've looked at. Um, overall goal of really a balanced community, um, that's that's offering a wide mix of land uses. Um, that is this, you know, achieving this mix without, um, detriment to existing character and it's really providing appropriate scale. Um, that's, that's a, you know, big part of the land use element as well, um, you know, preserving existing character and scale. And again, maintaining that balance of uses. Um, we did look at your housing element, uh, which is a bit newer. Um, twenty twenty, so fairly current. Um, and again, the principles outlined in your housing element really speak to having a mix of land uses, creating a wide range of housing opportunities. Clearly, there there's designated affordable units, but there's also just a this a desire to have a great diversity of housing options, um, that are part of walking, uh, walkable neighborhoods. Uh, neighborhoods that have distinctive sense of place, um, and that are strongly connected to, uh, to transit and and other amenities. So we do feel that it's very consistent with your housing element. Um, took a quick look at your your most recent re-exams back in two thousand seven, two thousand seventeen. Um, again, it, they're really replicating a lot of the goals from ninety-six that they've been very consistent, um, throughout. You know, mixed-use, smart growth, housing options, uh, walkability, bike pedestrian infrastructure, access to transit. You know, we do feel that this site and this development, um, really speaks strongly to all of those. Uh, and then lastly, we did look at your current master plan update, which, um, you heard earlier, the meeting is is still underway, but um, it was interesting to see the visioning that's been conducted, uh, for that master plan and the things that are um, valuable to the people who participated in that process so far. And again, we we heard strongly a desire for more housing options, diversity, wide range, uh, of housing, including some support for greater density and a recognition that with a lack of a a lot of vacant undeveloped spaces, Princeton's gonna need to be smart about how it, you know, how it attracts infill development and the way that that infill infill development happens. Um, so we do feel that, um, that our proposed development is is quite consistent with all of these master planning documents. It's gonna leverage an opportunity for, you know, for a strong, architecturally strong, uh, and efficient infill development. It's gonna provide new housing opportunities that are walkable to the community, including local parks, transit and businesses. Um, and it's really in keeping with with your long-established planning goals of of smart growth, um, and and positive development and existing scale. So, um, I was trying to be brief because I know it's been a long, long night with many witnesses, but, um, we do feel that this, um, this clearly meets the criteria for granting of a C two variance. Uh, all the variances that we've enumerated, um, and we urge that you adopt it, and I'm happy to take questions.
Uh, thank you very much for that. Um, y- y- you know, you talked about infill and this is very much infill. Um, and yet in a- all of the renderings, I just don't, you know, you don't see the the buildings right next, especially the building that would be directly behind this, just on the other side of the Arbor Body. I mean, I think the, you know, those homes are maybe eight feet from the, um, from the tree line. And so I I I would invite you to talk a little bit about context and, uh, the impact of these, um, dwellings on on those dwellings. Um, so obviously, they're they're much, much, um, taller and different than the than the dwellings to the north. But those are, you know, that's, that's a redevelopment area and that's gonna change. And so, um, so, yeah, I'll I'll stop there and let and let you talk.
Yeah, I mean, i- i- it's a change, no doubt. It it's it's a change from what, um, what exists now on that, uh, that eastern side of the site. Uh, I think the Arbor Body will go a long way towards screening, um, but but will they be visible, um, potentially from that adjacent property? I I do think that the uses are very much consistent with what is adjacent, uh, across the property line. Um, so currently, uh, it it's a parking lot that's basically right on their line. Um, so it'll be, the buildings will be set farther back than the current parking line is. Um, instead of cars right up against the property line, they'll have backyards of, you know, of a small apartment, uh, building. So, you know, will they be visible? Sure. But I do think that the context is entirely appropriate. Um, you know, this is a site that is surrounded by, uh, small-scale residential, fully multifamily, and this is essentially continuing that that context.
Uh, thank you. Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. On the, uh, issue of the residences to the east, and this may actually be more for, uh, Mr. Marina, but, um, the th- those those big windows, especially on the second floor, you know, uh, you know, I'm I'm just wondering about privacy, uh, how much, you know, people, you know, what what is, you know, are shades going to be part of the design element? Or are they up to each individual resident to provide their own? I'm just, you know, I'm just kind of kind of curious about the the privacy element.
Um, I think that there's a rendering that shows that that probably would be helpful just for for speaking and and I'm gonna actually let Marina speak to that. I I I don't think that shades will be provided, uh, for the residents, but, um, but perhaps she could speak to the architecture and and, um, and what that impact might be.
A- and if she does, which slide number? I apologize for scrolling in front of everyone.
Right, and the, um, the view from the Witherspoon Lane actually includes the oh, you just, yeah, there you go. So, um, w- w- we're just learning how to do this, but you could see the building back there. We didn't model it with great detail, but there is the building back there and, um, uh, definitely the ground floor and the second floor will have, um, the upper body providing, um, privacy screening. And that facade actually ju- happens to be a somewhat of a very blank facade. Um, so I expect that normally in rental conditions, um, window coverings are provided. Um, in my understanding, so I think that, um, this is facing east, so it wouldn't be an environmental issue of having them, but I think that's a really great idea um, to provide, um, shading as part of the rentals. Um, I think that's totally common to provide, um, window coverings. Uh, let's see. Yeah, so it it is somewhat of a blank facade on that side. I mean, there are a few windows, but it's not a major window wall on that.
Yeah, and there's also a large yard in the back though, also.
Yeah, so it's the front unit that's facing the side and the rest of it is facing, thank you. Um, yeah, exactly.
There, uh, there is a a sheet from one of our plans. It would be a new thing to mark because we didn't have it in our presentation, but I'd be happy to show uh, something that that Jim put together that I believe shows the relative heights next to each other, if that helps the board. I do believe we have to.
I would very much like to see that, Mr. Uh, Kennedy. Thank you, i- if you can dig that up.
Apologies for drawing the screens.
Curious about the differential, the height differential.
So I believe. Jim, am I showing the the right, uh, diagram here?
Um, yes, so if you look on the upper right corner, zoom in there a little bit. Yep, yep, there you go. So our building is three stories with a flat roof and the neighboring buildings are two and a half stories. So it it's not a.
Okay. But you're 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 rendering that we were looking at before the, before this makes the building behind the existing building look way shorter than
I think it's
than the new building.
It's in perspective, but also it's very interesting that that building is not parallel to Witherspoon Lane, so it's kind of at a
Yeah, right.
So it just kind of like creates an interesting condition there. Um.
Okay, that
And
very helpful. I.
And and with apologies, uh, just I'll ask Jim to describe what this is so we can market and and not lose track of what we're looking at here.
Yeah, sheet one be the site sections.
We'll make this, um, PB two, I think, exhibit.
Yeah, thank you.
That would be A two, because it's an applicant.
You're right, you're right, A A two, thanks. Uh, okay, Mr. Taylor and then Mr. Cohen.
Yeah. What what I'd like to talk about just for a moment is a subject that was briefly introduced at the beginning of the presentation by the applicant, namely the implications of AHO seven, the overlay. Technically, clearly, I understand the implications of the filing dates. But as a practical matter, whenever we're viewed by the public, the role that we're playing, affordable housing is one of the most important issues. And when we have a project which by nature simplistically sounds like the kind of project in spirit at least, if not in practice, that qualifies, how do we think about AHO seven? In this context, I think we should think about that as a planning board, and I think we should think about how the community listening in tonight or reading the town topics will react to what's been done. It's a beautiful project, so I'm not, I have no problem with the project. I'm impressed. But this issue, I think we should spend a few minutes discussing.
Sure, really good point, Mr. Taylor. Thank you for bringing that back up. And Mr. Kennedy, you referenced early on a condition that you had discussed. So could you describe that?
That's, that's correct. Um, and and I want to thank staff and, uh, and and your board attorney for helping us with this. You know, we're um, there are two, as we started with the the timeline of how we got here, there were two challenges. So one is, you know, the the kind of, uh, uh, look, people want to do things with their property and, uh, when the time is right, they do it and people work on things for a while. Uh, and the stages of different zoning things coming in and, you know, um, I'll say this applicant's been kind of patiently waiting and trying to work as this has developed and uh, timing was certainly not perfect, uh, but, uh, despite their their efforts, uh, but then the the encumbrances on the front. So there are, uh, the two ways of looking at AHO seven is one, you know, from what the municipality expects from a physical sense. Um, we we meet and 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 then some. It it drastically changes um, and would allow significantly more development on the site than we're proposing. Um, ninety percent, uh, impervious, for example, we're we're reducing it, um, now, things like that, that, uh, but um, from the affordable housing part of it, we, if we had access to the whole site, we would certainly be doing units on the front and it would comply frankly, perfectly. And that's the perfect vision, I think, that Princeton would have if we had a fully available site and AHO seven available now. We're in this spot where we have half the site um, and are dealing with with doing it in stages as best we can. And the solution, uh, from from staff and, uh, the the board attorney, which we we think is fant, you know, makes a lot of sense, is that to to ensure that this is not an applicant trying to, um, to use the subdivision analogy, do a series of minor subdivisions. They never have to do the major or do a series of four-unit development so that they never have to do units. Um, that is not what this is. And so the the condition that has been proposed, um, and we agree with wholeheartedly, looks at the site completely, so that when we come back, despite having paid, um, an affordable housing fee for what we're gonna do now, uh, we would be obligated to do new units based on the overall number. So if we could figure out a way to do six in the front for ten, we would be doing two units in that front building a- as part of this, uh, condition. Um, and we we think it's unique because of, um, uh, you know, you you're always looking at, um, how does this apply to 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 other projects? Well, we're very unique because we're in the pipeline and have very specific restraints that keep us from looking at the project fully at this moment. If we could, if the cell tower really could go away in a few months, um, and we didn't, uh, need to respect, uh, a long-term retail, uh, uh, tenant, uh, for the municipality, um, we would, we would do something. One of the other options that were drawn, um, that would have a different number of of units with a a twenty percent and, um, uh, and AHO seven would 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 apply perfectly. Um, but until that happens and looking at its staging, uh, in in phases, we're we're kind of in this middle point where we're looking under the current zoning with an idea of what the town wants, and we think delivering that. And that when we do come back to do the front, the rest of that vision gets delivered in a way that doesn't allow us, and this is not what we ever wanted, but does not allow us to get away with doing a bunch of four-unit projects and never doing affordable housing. That is not, you know, the 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 development here was dictated by the the size of what's available and the time. So, um, we, we jumped onto that, um, suggestion and and are wholeheartedly uh, agree with it as a solution. And and again, uh, as far as applications go, we think it's quite unique and not unique that we're talking about or unique that we're thinking about it, but this property is unique because of the constraints and where we came in the pipeline with AHO seven coming in, uh, which, uh, uh, we we expect that while a a really great condition that makes a lot of sense is not one that you're gonna see, um, used over and over again. Um, because we've been in this pipeline for so long with these unique to this property restraints that cause us to do it in a phased way.
Ryan, can I jump in? Would it be helpful actually to to read the proposed condition to put this into some context? Um,
Yes.
We we came up with language that we think addresses this for future development. It's it's a rather long condition, but it might help just to read it, so you kind of understand. Um, so it reads as follows, if the applicant or any other party having a sufficient interest in the property in the future files an application to construct more residential dwelling units on the property, whether or not a subdivision is proposed, the twenty percent set aside obligation and regulations that set forth in the AHO seven ordinance or municipality-wide affordable housing regulations, and specifically section T ten B three three six, which is the twenty percent set aside, as may be applicable, shall apply to all the dwelling units, factoring in those approved in this application, whether or not a unit approved in this application has been sold to a third party. If if the applicant or its successor at such time has already paid the affordable housing fee required by this approval, it shall be entitled to a refund of it if the second application is approved and certificates of occupancy for the residential units provided for in the second approval are issued. The refund refund will be paid using monies from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the extent that such monies are available. If some or all, um, such monies are not available, such monies as are available shall be paid to the applicant or its successor when they become available. This refund requirement shall not apply after ten years from the date of approval of this application. It, uh, of this application. Um, if approved. So the idea there is that if any subsequent development, um, involves residential units, that's gonna trigger the twenty percent set aside, and that's gonna include the four unit, the four units that are being approved with this application, even though there are no affordable units as part of this development. Um, so one way or another, if there's additional, um, residential development on this site, you're gonna have affordable housing. That's what that condition says. You're on mute.
Sorry, but what I was gonna saying i- is pure purely speculative, so probably shouldn't even be said. Uh, Mr. Cohen and then Mr. McGowan and then Mr. Quinn.
Thanks. So, um, this isn't why I originally raised my hand, but I did want to point out, and and the applicant mentioned this in passing early on, is that if this site is ever developed under the AHO seven rules, then many of the variances, many of the bulk variances will go away because, you know, it's a zero-foot side yard setback requirement under AHO seven. It's a fifteen-foot rear yard setback and so forth. So I just wanted to make that point. We can't rely on the fact that the applicant will uh, do a future project under AHO seven, so we really need to consider this application on its merits, but I did want to make that point, um, because I thought it was relevant to what Jack was asking.
Yeah.
Um, the reason I raised my hand was, uh, in terms of the side yard uh, variances for the the utility buildings, I guess, for the the bike um, storage and for the mechanical. I I'm curious, uh, you know, I'm thinking of those as sort of accessory buildings, and if, if it's possible, I I mean, not that this is the right thing to do, but if the applicant wanted to, could they pull it away, pull those buildings away by a foot from the exit, from the main building and thereby qualify them as accessory structures and make them conforming because accessory structures are allowed to be into the side yard. So that's a question.
It's five feet.
It's five feet. Derek requires them to be five feet.
Correct. Yes.
They can't be pulled away from, by one foot. They have to be pulled away by five feet.
Okay. And so it's not possible to pull them away by five feet and still.
It was just, at that point, it was like, well, it makes sense for them to be where they are. We could start doing these strange configurations and.
I'm not suggesting that they be pulled away. I'm asking a question as to whether they could be compliant. So if they were accessory structures.
So to, maybe I'll answer the question in a different way because we, we had, um, the, the same idea on, on our team. Um, so as accessory structures, they would be compliant. Could we do enough of that to fully remove the side yard setback variance? We come very close, but it wouldn't, um, it wasn't the magic bullet that I initially had, uh, thought, um, that by, um, playing with them, the difference between a building setback and a five-foot accessory setback by calling them building, we essentially are moving the building with, and, and, and you correctly, I think, and astutely picked up on that those, um, are often done with separate structures. So we, we did look at that. I think, you know, it might provide some numeric relief to the variance, but it was not enough that there would not be a variance. It would be almost a trivial number if we were to set it apart though.
Right. And, and the cost is the cost to, to a stronger design, we, we feel.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, that's, that answers the question. I do have some other comments once we get to deliberation, but I don't want to, uh, do that until everybody's asked their questions.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Cohen. Mr. McGowan?
I would like to, wondering whether I could propose another way of looking at, at this project since, since it's a unique area. Um, there are only four units there. And you've had a design, why not? And if you want to make them affordable, we're always talking about missing middle units. Why not four missing middle units there? Then you'd have to, you know, the applicant would have to adjust their rents to, to, you know, to, to fit in that, within that model. But why, why not for, to want to do that? And you're not going to, um, necessarily have to come back again, but, but worry about the AHO.
So ju- just so I understand the, the question, uh, the units that would satisfy, uh, a, a housing demand in the municipality, but would not necessarily comply, uh, with a, as, as a COA unit or ones that, that applied, uh, complied with.
No, no, these are, no, these are not COA units. Well, what I just, what I've just suggested, these are, they're not COA units. They, they're absolutely not that. But there, again, there, there's been discussion, there's actually been projects of, of other places where they've sought, where, where, you know, they're sought to be to, to provide another opportunity for what would have called them to, to satisfy the missing, the missing middle. Could that be a way of doing, you know, an opportunity to do that here?
Certainly understand the question. I'm, I'm just, I'm glad I clarified because, you know, I think those type of units um, wouldn't necessarily, um, resolve the variant. I, my understanding would be that if we were to do that, the, the variances would remain. Um, uh, it wouldn't solve, uh, a, a, any variances, but it would change the, the product type. Uh, we would have to actually be, uh, deed restricted, uh, compliant COA units to perhaps satisfy that end. But I, I, I think I understand that, but we could, we could certainly discuss that more.
I just want to, go ahead, David.
Uh, I just want to clarify, uh, Alvin, missing middle, I don't think there is any accepted definition for what that is. And in fact, the applicant might claim that these are missing middle because they're not, they're not five million dollar mansions, but the, I think what you're referring to is workforce housing, which is like a hundred thirty-five percent of median income or something like that. Is that what you're getting at or?
Look, it's you got, you know, it's, it's council that's, that's, that's brought this up. It's council that said, oh, we need to do something about, about missing middle. Yeah, well, I mean, uh, sure, I can, I can define, I mean, I can define that. I mean, clearly it's over eighty, it's over eighty percent of the median, but less than, than whatever the, the average cost of, of a house in Princeton is, which is something up, upwards to eight hundred thousand or a mi- or, or a million dollars. Some, there had, there seemed to be a necessity for housing in that range and that, and there seems to be, again, a push to have it. And I'm just, and I keep just saying, I mean, yeah, yeah, it's going to take some definition. But I mean, there, there, I just give you one, it's going to take, it would take some, some work to work out the definition of what it is, but.
Right. If, if I could speak to that for a minute, I, because I, I did, I did see missing middle discussed a lot in, in your planning documents. And, and I think it's correct, uh, Mr. Cohen's correct that there's no hard and fast definition. And I don't think Princeton has established, you know, rent limits on, on what is a missing middle. Um, you know, and I don't want to speak to rents because I don't think that they've been established. I don't want to go too far out on a limb here. But I do think from a planning perspective that this could be considered, uh, you know, in the realm of missing middle without knowing what the exact rents are because of the nature of these apartments. I mean, you saw the, uh, you know, the, the four plans of these units, they are not large. Um, these are not grandiose apartments. Uh, certainly they would be market rate, but they're, they're a smaller, uh, you know, smaller apartment size. Um, I think that the, the target market would be perhaps less than, you know, your high-end luxury apartments that you might find, uh, elsewhere in town. So to my mind, this does, you know, capture some of that missing middle market. Is it designated? Is it deed restricted? No, and certainly, you know, they're not COA units. And I think that's why you heard Mr. Kennedy, uh, talk to, you know, speak to the condition that has been discussed as a way to, you know, to address the AHO, 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 seven, uh, requirements, um, in the future.
Okay, I understand that, that, I understand what, what Mr. Kenny was getting at. But I, I, again, I'm, I'm sort of saying, think about this in an entirely different way.
Can I jump in real quick? It, it seems to me, Alvin, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, just to take away all these labels for a second, what you're asking is why not make smaller units than a four-bedroom, four-bath? Uh, you know, so that it's not, no?
No, I'm not, no, not at all. Leave the units, leave the units are they are now, but no, I'm not saying build small units. Leave them.
Okay, I, I'm not sure I understand them either.
Well, you're going to someone, now you've said rental, you could have sold, sold them. You've said rental, you want rental units. You're going to, I, there's a market out there for that. And I guess you can figure out what that market, I'm, I'm assuming that people here, you could figure out what that market is. But there for something, but what they would be rented to are people who can't find it to, you know, the, 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 the median price of a, of a home in Princeton is too expensive. And at the same time, they make, they're, they're folks that make too much money to qualify for a, you know, an, a Mount Laurel, an affordable unit. That, again, that seems, and I'm going to say it again, that seems to be a major discussion that you've had. Um, but, you know, with, with, with council, it seems to me you've tried to do this with essentially, with essentially accessory units. Where you've connected, you wait, wait, you know, it seems that you've tried to do that again with the, a way you've tried to address this problem with accessory units. Now, again, I'm, I'm saying maybe you could do this not with accessory units, but just, you know, again, you're going to have to work out what, whatever that's good, whatever that, that market is. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the point, Alvin. And I actually hope that the master plan is going to address this somewhat. I mean, many, many municipalities are moving away from single-family zoning, right? And sort of starting to allow duplexes and triplexes in neighborhoods that were otherwise single-family. Um, looking for more places to allow attached dwellings like these is another, um, way to, to produce housing that is less expensive than single-family housing. I think that hopefully the, the new master plan will weigh in on that topic and encourage it in certain locations, but we haven't gotten there yet. So it's hard to, you know, condition this application on falling into some expectation of what we think, you know, uh, missing middle housing price point should be. Maybe we will get there eventually, but I'm not sure how we get there on tonight.
Yeah, not, I'm sorry, everybody. I, I lost my internet connection for two minutes from ten oh four to ten oh six. Um, I don't, I, 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 I'm sorry about that. Um, I, I think I should still be okay to, uh, continue to deliberate and vote. Um, because I think you were talking about the missing middle the whole time, um, and I understand that, uh, both, both, uh, of your points. Mr. Mr. Quinn or Mr. McGowan, did you have anything else or, or, uh?
Nothing else, nothing else. I threw an idea out there, nothing else.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Mr. Quinn and then Mr. Texarney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think, uh, you know, as much as this board would like to, um, talk about the prevailing market rate of housing. Um, I, I don't think it's in our, it, it's clearly not our charge. Um, I, I personally would, would define missing middle as uh, something that a firefighter or, uh, or a librarian could uh, afford to, uh, rent and, uh, not have all of their money going to housing. But, um, there is really no, it's an idea. And I think, uh, as Mr. Cohen said, I think that the, the community is um, you know, is dedicated to exploring and to enabling, um, uh, the construction of that to the extent that it can, which, uh, anyway, I should stop talking about the market. Um, uh, two questions. I wanted to go back to the, to the condition and the, I actually have three questions. So, uh, among the questions, um, the lease for Mr. Hilton's, uh, shop is twelve years, correct? Did I hear that correctly?
I, I believe we have seven left. Um, power is that correct?
It's a twelve-year lease with seven years left. Okay.
No, no, let me look correct. So the twelve years remaining is for the tower.
Uh, they have. Oh, okay.
So Nick has his commercial lease expires in June of twenty twenty-eight, so it'll be five years from this coming June.
Oh, okay, great, great. Because I, I saw that there was a timeframe attached to the condition. Um, it's that, it's that, uh, Martina, at the end, you mentioned a ten-year
Yeah, that's, that just means that if, if, if any future, uh, development of residential units occurs after ten years from the date of approval, if this is approved, then the provision that we contemplated that the applicant would get refunded for the affordable housing fee that it is um, does have to pay, um, would be, would not, that would not happen. In other words, um, the, um, the housing fee would, would, would not get refunded after ten years.
But they would still be held to the twenty percent. They would just, after ten years forfeit that, um.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
And, uh, since I, I trust, uh, Mr. Mueller implicitly and by extension his, uh, future partner, uh, Martina, uh, I would say that there's, there's clear, there's been no challenge to the to allowing, to making planning, I'm sorry, it's been a, a long day. Um, to making planning board conditions transferable to the next owner. The case law is clear. I see Mr. Kennedy, uh, who's, uh, I know to be a lawyer.
Yeah, we, we're comfortable with this condition. I mean, conditions have to be fact sort of specific. Um, but this is a restriction that would run with the land, which reminds me um, that we may need to sort of add language that we might want a deed restriction to that effect just so that, you know, third parties are on notice of, of that restriction.
We, uh, I think we would be agreeable to that.
Good point.
Ultimately, those, a, a planning board, um, conditions do run with the land, much to many future property owners and purchasers surprise, even if they buy without notice, but, um, putting them on notice, uh, should it be transferred, uh, definitely, definitely makes sense, uh, as well. We would.
Great. And, uh, just one, one small question that's not related to anything legal or to the market, the real estate market for, uh, for Mr. Rabina. Um, the, first of all, thank you for creating public art on the space on the, on this, uh, on the, this building, for lack of a better term. I'm wondering about where it will be visible from. Uh, will you anticipate that someone walking down Witherspoon Street once, uh, assuming the tower is gone, uh, will be able to view this? Um, view this artwork from the sidewalk?
Yes, absolutely. Because of Witherspoon Lane. Um, and there's a parking area next to Delicioso, it widens that area somewhat that as a person walking down Witherspoon Street, that was exactly the point why we wanted to be located at that corner because it creates a landmark and destination, it's sort of a beginning of an interesting, you're like, oh, I'm the person who leads walks to coffee and secret passageways. And we are really hopeful that one day this will connect to something and people could be walking down the street and sort of discovering new passageways. Yes. Absolutely. That is exactly why it's located at that corner.
Thank you. Well done.
And is it correct that that, that overlooks, uh, is there still a building or parking lot as far back as that, or does it overlook the cemetery?
Uh, it is, um, I'm going to speak for our neighbors, but we have spoken to our neighbors in the surrounding vicinity and reviewed. And with the introduction of AHO seven, there are people thinking of doing things in that general vicinity. Um, and the Delicioso property, uh, the former Chancys properties, they start at Witherspoon and they go, we're look, our building looks at their current parking lot.
Okay, okay.
So there, hopefully in the future, something may come about and there would be friends talking to each other. So that would be us starting that link. Hopefully there would be things happening on the Franklin Maple site. And then hopefully with the, you know, now that we don't have to follow the crazy RB rules, people may start developing that interesting walking pedestrian.
Yeah, I, I don't want to go, I mean, I do care about context very much, but I also don't want to prolong the meeting by talking about stuff that's not before us.
We.
I took us down that road, so I'm not.
Look at it, look at it this way, uh, Madam Chair. The, the mural of Robson will look out and face the bust of Robson in the Princeton Room at the Princeton Public Library. So there, there will be a nice connection for, uh, fans of Paul Robson.
Yes, and with, in, in between, closer to the, to the new art, um, is the section of the cemetery that for generations was, uh, the African-American.
Um, correct. That's the, that's that side of.
Right. That's partly what I was thinking about. Um, Mr. Texarney.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I, I just wanted to, um, bring up some, uh, points about from the, the PEC memo. I, uh, I didn't actually, um, oh, so never mind. I, I, um, I, I guess what, what I wanted to say first is, um, that, you know, the memo, the memo was, uh, fairly critical of, um, the variances, but I think after, um, listening to, uh, the explanation of why the site was designed the way that it was, I feel, um, fairly comfortable with granting the variances. Um, I think that, you know, sometimes you gotta grant variances to, to make a better design. So I, I'm not too concerned with that. Um, with that being said though, um, I did want to, um, uh, bring up some of the, the things that were in the recommendations, uh, maybe first for Marina and then, and, uh, for, uh, James, uh, rega- regarding the site. So, uh, first regarding the architecture in the building, I, I, I just wanted Marina to respond to um, whether or not, um, the buildings. um, whether or not, um, the building is expected to be a net zero building once the, um, solar panels are installed and hopefully the, the solar panels will be installed right away. Um, and so that would be good to also to hear, uh, comment on, uh, the solar panels would be, uh, installed. Um, also, if there's a possibility of potentially incorporating a, a green roof under the solar panels, we've been kind of talking about that. Also, uh, we mentioned, uh, the idea of using a bird safe glass. I know that the building does have pretty big windows and, uh, birds tend to fly into, to big windows. Um, I've seen it, uh, happen in front of my eyes. So I, I definitely know that for sure. Um, and then also, if you can speak to, you know, the sustainable materials, uh, being used, um, you know, whether or not, um, the building is going to be, uh, you know, built to a lead standard. And then also, uh, I guess question about, um, solar shading, potentially incorporating solar shading on the west side to kind of reduce the, uh, heat gain, uh, during the summer and, um, you know, maximizing it during the winter. Also, um, uh, I guess related to health, uh, I guess it's related to the architecture, whether or not you, uh, commit to using low VOC, um, materials. And then also how the, um, building plans to be heated. And one thing that I've been actually interested in is, um, you know, seeing whether, uh, geo thermal heat pumps could be incorporated, especially, you know, when you're doing new construction. Uh, ge- geothermal heat pumps are by far the most efficient, uh, heating system, heating and cooling system. Um, but it requires boring, um, not, it's not boring, but drilling, I mean, uh, and so, uh, yeah, it would be good if you can speak to that. And then finally, um, uh, there was actually, uh, one of the comments. I, I feel like a lot of the comments were kind of just being critical of the, the variances. But, um, there was a question that, um, one of the, the members of PAC was, uh, very interested in is whether or not, um, the fire trucks can, um, access the, uh, roof, um, based off of the, the limitations of the fire trucks. Um, so I know that was a lot, but, um.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll try. So.
Yeah.
Well, we did have our, our fire official or, uh, I'm sorry, I'm now, I'm not saying he might have actually.
No, I still here.
He's still here.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Walker.
Maybe this would be a perfect time to have the, the fire conversation that.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I think that we already had it. Um, I, I guess I'm trying to.
He said he did have additional comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. All right. So let's, that was Mr. Texarney's last question. So we'll, we'll go through the other ones first. And then, um, you can have the, the, the fire apparatus, uh, conversation. So net zero and then solar panels, green roof?
Right. So we will, um, I, I'm gonna speak for Howard here. So Howard, stop me if at any point I'm, I'm saying something that, uh, doesn't work. I think that we will make every attempt, um, to do green construction. And we are proposing a fully electric building. Uh, so that's a start. But, um, at this point in time where materials are completely delayed and not available, and when you're faced with an option, we are not seeking certifications. But as a rule of thumb, as somebody who graduated from a college of environmental design, it goes without saying that we make every attempt in situations to pick the most environmental material. And whether it be, um, by purely a long lasting product that will serve a really long time and doesn't need to be replaced, or something that's certified, or something that's innovative. But I can't at this point, given the economic situation and whether you can't order these windows because they're twelve months lead time, we just can't make any promises at this point that we will use a specific product. But I think we'll make every attempt. We will be, of course, using fixtures that are low flow and all of these standard elements. There's not even, no need to mention that. I have not heard the green roof with solar panels on top of them yet. That's a new one to me.
Oh, it's a thing.
I, I was like, oh my goodness, I have not, I just got solar panels installed on my house. Um, with no green roof, uh, and it's been, you know, an absolute pleasure. I have had issues with multifamily buildings and solar panels being a little bit complicated because it's not clear how, because there's the, the overall site and their individual units, their, the EV chargers. So again, I, I can't make any promises at this point in time. And for example, on my house, all of the New Jersey systems for giving you DAX spreads, they're so backed up. I just got an email today that you guys are not even gonna hear from us for six months. So. Will we make every effort? Absolutely. Can we promise you that it will be installed on this date? It's just not in the current construction situation that we can make those promises. Um, I have not heard about the, the, like I said, the green roof with solar panels. I have to definitely research that. Um.
I, I can just comment on that. Typically, yeah, it's typically that there's a superstructure that lifts the panels like four or five feet off of the roof to allow the plants to go underneath, kind of like when you put solar panels over a parking lot.
Wouldn't that be over the height limit?
I, I think it would be. So in this case, um, I, I'm not sure that it would work.
Oh, boy.
Comment on one point, um, the design has fireplaces in the units. I think we're gonna just on those units, run those by gas, uh, and the stove.
Missed that part, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not that it's largely electric. The only, the only.
Decoratively electric.
Decoratively, right. So, but the stove top was contemplated to be, um, gas powered electric for the, um, the baking unit, for lack of a better term. I don't cook, so I don't really know what that thing's called.
Oven. It's an oven.
I, mine is this.
Right.
An oven to me is this big. And so, um.
Thank you for clarifying, but the heating.
And then the fireplace would be, you know, natural gas. We were contemplating, um, using natural gas, cause I think electric kind of loses something in that translation.
But there's no gas heating.
Yeah.
Or anything like that, right?
No.
That could all be operated by the solar panels. If we could solve how we're gonna do the, like, who, how, how do you designate all that? Uh, because then I don't know if this, you could do it by unit or do you need community solar? I'm gonna need help sorting that out.
Community solar would be something different. But yeah, I mean, there, I think that there are ways to, um, you know, deal with, you know, multiple.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna need help sorting that out on a multifamily building. We have several in the construction process that will be done before this one. So hopefully we'll, we'll work that out, uh, but, um, it's not quite trivial. Well, is a single family, it's very easy. Roof, solar panel is done. But with multifamily gets a little complicated because there, you know, who owns the panel, who gets the credit? Um, and then.
Well, these are rental units. So the property owner, I mean, I, I.
Yeah, but you.
People have definitely, this is, this has, uh, been figured out by.
Yeah, I just need help with, with figuring that out and we'll definitely do that. On the geothermal, I think we'll absolutely look into it. We have not looked into it yet. But if it, if it ends up, we don't know what type of soil it has. Is it feasible? Is it doable? But we can certainly, um, absolutely, um, request, um, you know, to, to look into it, right? Howard, I don't see why not experiment and look into this new, uh, yeah, I mean, geothermal has been around for a while, but we have not looked at it for this project. So I see that we could definitely investigate that.
And, you know, uh, inflation in the construction arena has been substantial. So it's, we could all go through the exercise, but if it ever reached a point where it, it, it's not feasible economically, I think that's where, uh, you have to have a conversation, right? Because, um, I have seen prices. I did a, for example, on a small project, I did a cedar shake roof. Um, that was five hundred a square is up to, uh, fifteen hundred a square. So three hundred percent inflation on material cost is substantial, right? And so we, we happen to be in a real unique, not only you have supply chain issues, but the inflationary costs have been, um, material, uh, over the last eighteen to twenty-four months. I mean, um.
I respect that and I don't mean to put, I, I, I wanna make sure we finish this tonight. We have a hard stop at eleven o'clock. I wanna just rip through these issues that Mr. Texarney raised and get the yes, no, yes, no, so that other folks can, uh, make comments and ask questions and then. And we also, oh gosh, of course not. All right. Um, so I heard you say you're gonna, uh, make it solar ready. You're trying for net zero? Did I hear that?
No, uh, we will do our absolute best to use every green technology we can, but we're not gonna go for any certifications.
Okay.
Not sure what.
Solar shading and bird safe glass?
Bird safe glass, I think we definitely need to look into that.
You definitely do because.
Yeah.
My windows are much smaller than yours and I get bird hits.
And Zina, you mean the, the, um,
There's different kinds. So actually there are glasses that actually, um, they, they are visible, like they're, they, they're block, block it for birds, but they're actually not visible to, um, the human eye. So actually, like you can, the texture or whatever, the, the, um, reflection. So, you know, I would recommend.
Very good point. Yeah, we, absolutely. Yeah.
Solar shading?
Uh, so on our western facade, we actually have very, not that many windows. We do have some. In order to solar shade those, that would have to be vertical shading. So I think that we would much rather concentrate on growing those big trees um, and doing our shading that way. But what, what else do you mean? Like you can't do horizontal shading on a west facing window. It has to be some form of a fin or.
It's solar shading typically, you know, it sticks out above. It's like a slightly.
Right, but it won't work on a west facing window because by the time the sun comes down, it's, it doesn't work.
I mean.
So that's why I'm like, I don't know how to do a solar shade on a west facing window. It just doesn't.
That's the answer.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right. Um, yeah, uh, so I, I don't know if we wanna talk about fire or, um, and I, I do apologize, but I do have some comments about the site as well, which I should be quick.
We do need to talk about fire. So let's hear from Mr. Walker and then we'll hear your site, uh, uh, comments. Mr. Walker?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, in my memo, uh, dated April seventh, uh, bullet point number one, uh, was talked about regarding the, uh, ladder sixty, being able to, uh, park in the, uh, the parking area and has capable reach of reaching the roof. Uh, we have no issues, uh, with that happening. And bullet point number two, um, I understand the building is fully sprinklered. Um, is that true?
Marina, is the building?
Yes, I lost my, my, um, button. Yes.
Okay, uh, will there be FDC connections for each unit or one large one for all four?
Uh, Jim, that's the.
We had one, we had one on Witherspoon Lane for all four at this point.
That's the one that's in the side setback.
Right, in the side area, yeah.
In, in that utility room on.
In that vicinity, yeah.
Okay, that works out well. Um, do you guys agree to adding a fire hydrant on Witherspoon Lane?
No idea.
Mr. Kennedy, Mr.
Um, we weren't planning on one at that specific location.
Okay, uh, there, there currently isn't one on Witherspoon Lane at all. So adding one, uh, near your property would be uh, greatly beneficial to us and to you.
Happy to talk about it. Um, that, that, that wasn't something we had seen or, or thought about before. Um, if it's, if it's needed, we'd be happy to work with you, um, on it.
Okay, uh, we can discuss that further. Uh, bullet point number three, uh, can you go back to the slideshow and show where the six foot fence is on the north and south side of the project?
Jim, is this a good view to, to show this from?
Yeah, I think that, um, the, the top portion of the property is the north, right? So that where the existing chain link fences falling down, we were discussing whether we would have a fence or whether you felt that the fence was not necessary. That was something to discuss. And then there's a, only a minor portion of the fence on the bottom where the invasive tree is. Um, so there's a very short section of it.
I, uh, really liked Madam Chair's, uh, suggestion of getting rid of that tree. That would be beneficial to us to access the backyards. I appreciated your excitement about, uh, connecting, uh, gates. Uh, can, can you explain a little bit more about the connecting gates?
Um, yes, so we have these four units that have, um, fences in between them. As, um, Ryan, can you point to the fences?
I'm trying to find my cursor, yeah.
Oh, cursor gone missing.
Yeah.
Uh, the, yeah, so there would be a fence and then, uh, there would be a gate that's operable between those. So that if, for example, you guys started, uh, firefighters were entering from Witherspoon Lane, they could open the gate in the southernmost fence and then just go through opening gates.
Okay, uh, that, uh, answered that perfectly. Thank you. And bullet point number four, uh, do you intend to, uh, construct this with truss roof design?
That was not our intention. Um, is that a good thing or a bad thing?
No, it, uh, totally up to you. If, if you do, you do add truss, uh, roofing, uh, we just require that a, a sign go up on the front of the building.
Gotcha.
Uh, something else that I'm just learning tonight, uh, with the solar panels, uh, should you add the solar panels right away? Uh, signage is also required for that.
I'm aware of that.
And the EV, uh, parking, I just learned about that tonight. Um, if you guys could provide, um, a well labeled emergency shut off uh, switch for that. And also for the solar panels, uh, a well labeled emergency shut off switch.
Emergency disconnect for those solar panels is absolutely required. Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Walker, um, do you mean for the EV? For the EV chargers and also the bike? Are you gonna have any bike charging in your bike storage facility?
Um, we don't mind having that. It's always a good idea, but I think those are not any particular chargers. It's just an outlet and a bicycle plugs into that. Um, there, it's not a separate device that one purchases. It's just plug into an outlet.
Okay, I, I don't know whether Mr. Walker has any comments, suggestions about that. I know, but you know, electric bikes and scooters. When the, when they have substandard batteries or the battery has been damaged or something like that can, can and have caused fires. And, um, it just didn't, if you're gonna have, um, outlets in there for bike charging, then there should be a shut off, I would think, for those as well as for the EV charging station, uh, charging stations.
If you, if you did provide a charging station within the bicycle area, would you, um, sprinkler that bicycle area with the, um, lithium batteries and stuff, that would be a significant fire in, in the bike enclosure.
We could. I'm sure we can work on what exact requirements you would need for us to, um, make that bike room work.
I mean, I would look into that. I'm sorry, I know, I, I don't, I'm talking about stuff I don't fully understand, but I do know that putting water on a lithium ion battery fire is a very bad idea. So I don't know that a typical sprinkler, I just don't know. You know, I do know that the, that the university has addressed, you know, has ways of thinking about this and, and, um, neutralizing dangers associated with it. So it might be worth consulting them.
I'm afraid what I remember from the university is they don't allow low quality scooters. They don't allow students to have the kind of scooters that the battery catches on fire.
Yeah, and you know that the students have to register their scooters and bikes and stuff. So yeah, that's, you're right. Yeah, and you know that the students have to register their scooters and bikes and stuff. So yeah, that's you're right. Yeah, yeah. So.
But we will definitely.
Just it's something to really.
Yeah, work with our professionals to figure out exactly what's the right solution. Yep.
And with Mr. Walker too, to make sure that we're we're doing it the right way.
Exactly.
And uh my last comment is uh the gas, the gas meters, is that gonna be on the southern end in the mechanical area also?
Jim.
Yeah, it's likely that would be in that location. I think it will be coming off of Witherspoon Lane.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for coming.
Great, thank you. Um, Mr. Tex Arnie?
Yeah, yeah, that was actually pretty interesting and helpful. So having the the fire department here. Um, so I should, before I moved on to the site, I should also mention that um there is a pretty generous tax credits for solar and. Um geothermal, so you should look into that twenty-six percent.
Absolutely.
So you can write up depreciation. So um and you get SRECs as well. So um as far as the site is concerned, um I was wondering if uh it's possible to do. Um, I guess permeable pavers and and porous asphalt in the um parking stalls. Was that? Did you guys say that you were gonna do that or?
No, well, we did give some consideration to that. I think um Howard has some some concern for. The overall maintenance of the parking area in terms of, you know, future overlays. So he'd like to keep that consistent. We can certainly. Um, in terms of um. You know, regular pavement for the asphalt, we can give some thought to um the walkways in front of the four residential units, perhaps. Um permeable pavers there would sort of. Provide some infiltration and help to support, you know, the trees and the landscaping in that area. That may be. Um, something that we weren't planning on doing, but you know, that that we can give consideration to. Uh, there for those walkways for some infiltration. And again, we're. We are investing in, you know, all those conveyance improvements as well.
Right, okay. Um, and uh there was also mention of uh the use of deep roots silver cell. I know that uh Lu- Louise mentioned that. Um, as well uh to to help with uh stormwater uh retention and healthy tree growth. So um have have you looked into that at all?
I did take a look at it. Um, we need to do a little bit more research into. In terms of, you know, the geometry of the area that we're that we're dealing with for those tree wells, but. Um, prior to the meeting, you know, it it may be something that we can incorporate and. Ultimately, um as I said, we'll work with uh Mr. Dobromylski, you know, for the final details of that. And if it's possible and it makes sense. Um, you know, for their those trees and I'll pro- provide a benefit. Um, without any unnecessary erosion in that area, we'll give that some some thought to try to include something like that.
Okay, and uh there's also a recommendation to diversify the tree species in the front walkway. I believe that they're all Armstrong red maples and.
Yeah, we can um mix it up a little bit, yeah.
Okay, great. And then um. In terms of the EV charging stations, is that, uh, do you guys trigger the EV ordinance or is that voluntary? Would you, could you speak to that or?
Uh. We are, we are providing the. Those two EV parking stalls as part of our overall uh parking ejaculation.
Okay, but I believe it's voluntary that that we're not, we're not actually adding spaces here, so it is a um. We're we're, I believe we're doing it um. Frankly, to make the the numbers work in because we want to have the chargers there. It's it's not triggered by the addition of use or space here because we're removing parking.
Yeah, I I just, I know that the ordinance, if you have a certain amount of units, then it triggers the ordinance and it's required. And so and then, you know, there's a certain amount and it scales up, you know, over time. But that's that's good. If it's voluntary, I mean, I would encourage uh you to potentially. Add more, but you know, if not, at least add um the conduit to be able to add more. Um, I think that, you know, two is great, but you know, I think it it's very possible that. Um, you know, there might be much more. EV uh use uh in the future, considering that they're, you know, looking to to ban the sale of. Internal combustion engines. Um, so um, yeah, I think that that would probably be appreciated by um future users and and having that conduit will save you guys some money in the future to.
Good, good point. And just to to loop back to a prior comment, you know, we'll we'll also be looking at whether to get that over to the ADA spot uh as well, just to make sure that and. Come once we confirm that that's not. Incompatible with having it really count as an ADA spot. Um, we'll we'll looking at that as as well.
I apologize for my interruption. I just wanted to remind you, I have eleven people in attendance from the members of the public.
Yep, thank you, Carrie. Uh, anything else, Mr. Tex Arnie?
No, I'm all done. Thank you.
Okay, um, and um unless I'm seeing other. Hands raised and pressing questions from board members, which I don't see, I'll open the meeting now to public comment. So if you're here from the public and we have eleven. Uh, attendees, um. Who I saw Mr. Lesko's hand go up just now, so. Justin, but for for those of you in the public, um if you're going to want to uh speak to the board, um uh. Please uh start to raise your hand now. And um, uh, what's up, Mr. Lesko?
Sure, I I'll try to keep this quick. Um, I didn't get a chance to go over my comment, but I think they've all generally been covered. Um, except I I am concerned um about the those trees that were mentioned. Uh, in front of the buildings, um, Mr. Dobromylski's memo and the uh shade tree commission memo were pretty uh. You know, pretty clear that it doesn't work, uh you know, either the sidewalks are growing up or the trees are dying. Um. Before we send this to something that is uh figured out by staff after the fact. Uh, you know, I think it'd be helpful to get some input on. Is it? As easy as switching the species or is it going to be something? That really is going to involve uh, you know, changing the site plan, uh pushing back the buildings or or removing. Uh narrowing that that drive aisle. I I mean, I'd rather work that out now. Uh even at the limited time than than have a. Hard conversation later.
Yeah, that's a really good point. Thanks for bringing it back up. I think with with the two feet that we can get by um. Uh narrowing the drive aisle. In a way that was comfortable both for um our traffic consultants and for the fire department. Um, I I would think that those two feet should go in front where the trees are planted rather than uh in back. To increase the setback, but I I am interested in hearing from the public on that point. Because I think there are other ways i- if we absolutely had to to, including with silver cells and whatnot. To be able to support those those uh trees in front. Um, but I I would like to know what other folks feel. Uh about that. And I see that Martinez. Ms. Bailey's hand is up too.
Sure, I I had a quick question on um one of the waivers that had been identified by Mr. Lesko. Um, Ms. Favate had had suggested it wasn't necessary. This is the the waiver from the um turning bay requirement. I just wanted our folks um. Maybe um Mr. Weissman or Mr. Anisoki to to comment on whether they think that waiver is required. Um. Or not. Um, if it is required, I think I think um the applicant provided reasons for granting the waiver, but I. I I would just like our uh staff to comment on that, maybe starting with Mr. Weissman or um Mr. Anisoki is still with us.
Sure, I'd I'd be happy to jump in there. Um, that comment came from our memo. Uh, the code states that uh parking lot is provided with turning bays or other means of turning at intervals not greater than twelve hundred feet. The exhibit provided by the applicant showed that uh a means of turning around is provided. Um, so I do not believe that design waiver is uh required anymore.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to start public comment? I saw that um Mr. Floyd was brought over.
Yes.
Um, and did you bring anybody else over yet?
Uh, there's another person, PUP forty-one. I'll move them over.
Okay, fine. Um, Mr. Floyd, you know the drill.
I'm just gonna swear you in.
We'll swear you in uh quickly and then um you have three minutes. Thanks.
Okay.
So if you could just raise.
Raise your right hand. Sixty-four Harris Road.
Thank you. Sorry, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn, please just just um let us know your address again, please.
Sixty-four Harris Road.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um. Wanted to thank um Mr. Taylor's question and also resolving that there is, you know, um. While there is a loophole, but there isn't your your intentions or if you develop. The uh existing building. And if there's going to be housing, there'll be affordable housing in that. That's great. Um, of course, the only uh. Sort of al- alternative that could happen. Um, also could be. It stays as or gets rehabbed, redeveloped as an office. Retail building under preexisting. Approvals or preexisting nonconforming. But as David points out, we're look. You're just looking at the four units in the end and judging that. Um. Next comment uh related to what Alvin uh Mr. McGowan said or asked about. I just happen to carry around a definition of missing middle. In my phone, I did not look it up today. Um, and according to the Pew, the Pew Center. States uh for them, it's two thirds of median income. And on the low end. Up to two times median income. So. You don't quite get up there to um. You know, rich people's status or whatever. Um, I'm glad it's gonna be rental or. Um, I guess I'm glad it's gonna be rental because there was word on the street as that it was gonna be for sale housing. Um, that I had heard like three weeks ago from people more in the business section. And that it was gonna go for like two million dollars townhouse. Now, I don't know what your rentals are gonna be. I do know that. Developers are kind of amazed at the rents they can get in Princeton now. Recently on new construction and rehab. You know, people are bidding over the asking price. Um, you know, five, five thousand to six thousand dollars a unit a month. I'm assuming your units, four bedrooms, four bath, will be higher than that. Um. Most people I I I know wouldn't rent it because of that or they won't be there. I. I will go on to. Another comment and it's regarding the mural, which. Fine, I uh I I know there'll be future discussions. My. Um, first reaction when I read the narrative that's online is. Hmm, Paul Robeson is getting to be like a a. A token. You put him on the wall and ask for extra points. Um, I think you ought to, you know, what's that? Also, there's more to the John Witherspoon neighborhood than Paul Robeson. There were. A whole bunch of folks mixed in together, black, Italian, Irish. Um, there had been discussions among some people I know about a mural. And this goes back to the um Lee Avenue dispute with the Arts Council. So going forward, maybe these discussions could be about something other than Paul Robeson. Which seems to me is the easy way out.
Third's past two three minutes.
Thanks, Ms. Philip. Um, but yeah, this is an interesting and good point, Mr. Floyd, and I think that's the kind of thing that really ought to be discussed directly with um. With the building owner and the artist, um because I feel like, you know, well, Ilya anyway, I'm sure everyone is is, you know, wanting to. Not make the kind of misstep that you're describing.
Yeah, and could I get fifteen fifteen seconds more?
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, um, I do worry about the traffic on Witherspoon Lane. There was no. Same census of how many cars on the existing residence. Also, I know behind the bakery, they're gonna build that out. And there's no discussion on. The impact of yours and theirs. And I I can stop there. I.
Thank you. There might be a stop sign, four way stop in the future or three way since since Lidl is the one way, the other way. Uh, thanks, Mr. Floyd. Um. Uh, we have the next speaker and I'll again call for any anybody else who wishes to speak to please raise your hand. Um, PUP forty-one, William. Um. If you could activate your camera and um. Tell us your whole name.
Yes, hi, my name is Donna Lise and um.
Yeah, Liz, you need to be sworn in.
Okay.
Just raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give is the truth?
I do, yes.
So sworn, just please spell your last name and give us your address, please.
It last name is Lise, L I E S E, and I live on twenty-eight Witherspoon Lane.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, so I I just want to um ask about the the traffic on Witherspoon Lane, which is one of my concerns. I've lived on Witherspoon Lane for about eighteen years. And I know that, you know, what happens when you get to the very end of Witherspoon Lane where it intersects with Witherspoon Street. There's really only room for. One car to come in and out of Witherspoon Lane off of Witherspoon Street. So, you know, what's happened for, you know, the past eighteen years is if. If somebody is coming down Witherspoon Lane towards Witherspoon Street. And you all of a sudden encounter a car that needs to come into Witherspoon Lane, the person on Witherspoon Lane basically has to back up. To make room for the car coming in. Sometimes what happens is like the person coming in will kind of like shimmy over into that little parking spot. Like that parallel parking spot next to Delizioso Bakery if it happens to be open, but that tends to be open less and less now that Delizioso is there. So I guess my concern is is like, you know, although you know, you're only proposing four additional units, um. It's still gonna increase the number of cars coming in there. You'll also increase the number of deliveries coming in there. So overall, the traffic is going to increase. And of course, as you're also talking about, you know, the development behind Delizioso Bakery, you're gonna have a lot more traffic coming into Witherspoon Lane. And I worry about how many people are gonna be like backing up down Witherspoon Lane just to make room for the car trying to come in. And also, since you're now gonna open up that that spot coming out of the parking lot. Of this development property to be two way now, you're gonna have additional cars using that lane because some of them used to exit out that way that you're gonna be closing. So I'm just, you know, I'm concerned about the traffic and like how everybody's actually gonna be able to maneuver out of Witherspoon Lane and onto Witherspoon Lane at the same time.
Thank you for for that. Um. Who is the right person, Mr. Kennedy, to address?
Sure, um, I think.
Questions, but let me just first say that one of the things we need to be mindful of is. Is pedestrian and bike safety and access and not just cars. Um, because the hope is that with these and other units in this area, you know, we're not everybody will have a car. Might not generate as even even the addition of, you know, several more units might not generate as much car traffic. At least we hope. So anyway, I just wanted to to throw that out there that um. You know, those cars a- also are gonna be interacting with people and bikes and we need to be mindful of that. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr.
I I I think that's very astute way of looking at it and just in passing over to George, I I think. Both of the traffic consultants, the municipalities and and ours are are I the testimony that we heard was that this is. We call it a de minimis change, but in in reality, we are removing parking spaces and those spaces were not really a function of the use of that building. They were being used perhaps because there were spaces there by replacing those spaces with places for people to live. Not really generating more need or trips. We're removing places for cars to go and be so uh uh. Apologize for uh and I don't mean to testify, but uh George, if you want to answer.
No, I I think I was gonna make the same point, you know, you you saw in the 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 aerial photos that that at least some events where there was parking spaces were completely uh filled, used. So, but you know, the the point is correct, you know, uh in the sense that Witherspoon Lane is narrow, it's about sixteen feet. And so when you do have. And sixteen feet is enough for two vehicles to pass each other, a truck and a car. I mentioned that earlier. That's enough. It's just at the corner when the vehicles are turning, that's where it becomes a little bit more complicated. On occasion, you may have a vehicle that may have to back up. But the whole thing happens at very low speed, so it's not. Yes, it's it's annoying maybe, but it's definitely something that is not hazardous because it happens at low speed. Uh, the site conditions are relatively good at the intersection. The site conditions are relatively good at the intersection of Witherspoon Lane and Witherspoon Street. So I I don't see that it, I don't think there's going to be huge change, you know, because we are taking out parking spaces. You know, we estimated that this development will generate during the peak hour, one to two vehicle trips in that peak hour in the morning. So that's a very, very minimal increase.
Yeah, I mean, I would just add that we've already had a sizable increase, you know, since Delicioso Bakery opened. And I love Delicioso Bakery, but you know, we have seen, you know, an increase in traffic with that. And, you know, I mean, I I also, I I ride my bike a lot and I, you know, walk up and down the street a ton. We won't have those pedestrian pathways to kind of like go down Witherspoon Lane and then like turn left onto Witherspoon Street. So we're going to be riding our bikes and like walking down Witherspoon Lane to get to Witherspoon Street. And with additional cars like backing up even at a slow speed, I mean, it it does pose, you know, some concern, you know, especially for, you know, you know, kids or, you know, you know, people who are just learning how to ride their bikes and, you know, I just, I just feel like with a lot of people having to back up down Witherspoon Lane in order so somebody can turn in because it's the turning that's exactly the problem. It's the turning into the lane. It's not, you know, like once somebody backs up, two people can cross, but it's the turning in and the turning out that can't happen.
We we understand your point and and thank you for raising it. I I think one thing that may need to be contemplated is restricting parking in your lot that you've been so generous with, Mr. Memna, and so that you know, customers of Delicioso are are not necessarily parking there in the future. I don't know how to to you know, restrict that and but but the point is taken. So I, we are at 11 o'clock. I want to ask the board if you're willing to continue to finish this tonight, if we can do so in, you know, 15 minutes or so is, can I have that?
I I just have concern, Louise, you know, Martinez have to going to have to go over the conditions. You know, she does it at Jerry's speed, that would take the whole 15 minutes without any more deliberation. She may be able to do it quicker than Jerry, but I'm I'm really concerned. I think it's a half. I think we need a half hour.
Okay, that I take that point. Are people willing to stay another half hour or do we?
How many more people are?
No, but there, I'm sorry, you should have, I should have said this, Alvin. There's nobody else with their hand raised. So public comment. I'm closing public comment now. It's a, we're in a position to deliberate as a board, go through conditions and vote. So 11:30 is really late meeting. It's it's later than we almost ever go and you know, it would not be my first choice, but I'm asking if folks are willing to do that or whether we want to reconvene.
I'm willing to continue.
Let's go.
I'm willing to continue.
Me too.
Okay, let's let's deliberate. Mr. Cohen.
Okay. I want to talk individually about the variances. I do feel comfortable with most of them. In particular, I want to comment on the parking in front of the building, which I think that that's a rule that we have in our ordinance to, it's about the streetscape. It's that we don't want cars parked in front of buildings between a a street and the building. And in this case, that's just not relevant. So I think that that's totally fine. I alluded to this before. I feel like the the one-story structures that go into the side yard to me are no worse than an accessory structure. Because they're only one story and they don't go closer than five feet to the to the property line. So to me, those those are fine. The the one variance that I really have trouble with is the the side yards for the main structure itself. Because right now, the end buildings, and I'm not talking about the interesting three-dimensional articulation, which I think is nice. But, you know, you've made each of the townhomes 23 feet wide. If each of them was 22 feet wide, you would have no encroachment on the side yards except for the interesting features and and those accessory structures. And to me, I just did not hear any testimony that explained to me why you couldn't make them 22 foot wide instead of 23 foot wide. I understand the front to back pressures on the dimensions of these. But I I really have trouble supporting that one variance. And then the the one other thing I wanted to say is that in terms of the green roof versus the solar. And I agree with Marina that you can't really do both because you'd be in a height variance situation. But to me, you know, with stormwater pressures that were experienced as a community and the fact that this property has absolutely no stormwater management currently, you know, to say that they're not required to because they're not increased in the previous coverage. Strictly speaking, that's true, but I think that the applicant should, you know, they're asking for some variances and we should be able to condition those variances on doing something more than what they're required to do for stormwater. And so to me, a green roof, which would slow the discharge of stormwater into the municipal system significantly would be a bigger benefit than the small amount of solar that you could get onto this roof. And so I would, I would push for the condition to have a green roof. I would also like to see as much purview pavement as possible for the same reason. And then, you know, we've already, I think, agreed on the planting strip being widened by the two feet. I would like to hear Dan Dobremilsky just comment on whether he thinks that's sufficient. Or there may be some other measures needed to ensure the survival of those trees in the planting strip.
Mr. Dobremilsky?
Yes, good evening. I I have been able to hear a lot of the hearing, even though I was gone for a little bit. So I think the two-foot helps immensely. I think the idea of using pervious pavers for that walkway would help immensely. And I think the combination of that in choosing the location of the tree relative to the parking and possibly having the walk not necessarily be straight, but maybe kind of go, you know, move in and out a little bit. Particularly where the trees are. I think in all that combination, you could get creative and make something that'll work for the tree and the walk at the same time. And I think that's possible. I think you just got to kind of work with it. This is a small spot. It's a small length. So I think you can do it and come up with something that will work with all those this this conditions that we talked about. So I think it is possible.
Right. And Mr. Dobremilsky, do you need to be, do you need to specify, does one need to specify certain kinds of pervious concrete or pavers in the immediate vicinity of root zone? Because if water's going through it, you know, the leaching of alkaline, I mean, I don't know, I'm not trying to make up stuff, but it does occur to me that permeable concrete could potentially create an an issue that you don't want with, you know, transferring certain pH properties to the root zone that you don't want, but maybe that. Anyway, when you said good solutions can be found, is that a that is something that could be reviewed by the landscape committee?
That's what I was, that's what I was imagining where you were going and.
Okay, all right. I should have just gone right there instead.
I was thinking that we use unit pavers and not necessarily concrete. So because I just think that's a wiser, long-term solution anyway for them. So that's what I was thinking and I could work with the applicant ultimately take it to the landscape subcommittee, like you said, for review and approval.
Great.
And then I just want to say, I should have started out with this, but I think this is a really attractive project. So kudos to the applicant.
Thank you for that.
I just, well, just note, the applicant is agreeable to the 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 green roof consideration to be reviewed as part of the landscape subcommittee. That that might be a better choice than than solar.
Or there could be, because we have roofs at different heights. There could be a combination of some solar and some green roof that gets us both things.
Yeah, and and I mean, I I mean, I I still would like to see the solar. I mean, I know our ordinance is a little dated. You know, I've actually shared some things with our zoning officer about, you know, potentially updating the ordinance and hopefully David and counsel can, you know, you know, look into that. But I also do think that, you know, the applicant should consider porous asphalt and the silver cells as well. You know, that might be actually a more economical alternative to green roof. But I mean, maybe we can leave that up to to the sub.
Yeah, so I think we'd be happy to discuss with the subcommittee that I think if we're going all electric on our heating and cooling of the buildings, it would be really good to have solar panels to offset that. So we don't have to have 100% one or the other. And I'm a big fan of having green roof where people could see it and enjoy it. And especially we have lower roofs with windows over it. So we could have green roofs lower. So people in the upper windows are looking at a beautiful fuzzy something. And it also helps to maintain the green roof. If something happens, you could see it. So I think that would be a great way to combine the solar and the and the green roof.
Right. And I I think it's important to to be careful about what we do send to the landscape committee in the in the way of decision making. I think that the conditions, if we put conditions, this board should say, or the applicant should agree, you'll do green roof and solar. And then the the particulars of that will be worked out with landscape committee rather than maybe we will, maybe we won't. We'll talk to landscape committee about it because that.
Right, yeah, I think that'd be great. So I would suggest that, for example, we have two lower roofs that are absolutely perfect for green roofs because they will create absorption of the rain. They're visible. People could see them and enjoy them and they're in no conflict with the height limit. And then that that eliminates that issue. And then the upper roof could be solar panels because we that would be a greater environmental benefit to offset all the electric equipment. So I think that gets us to both things at the same time.
I'm sorry, I just remember, I I just wanted to make one more comment about the width of the units, which is that if it went to 22 instead of 23, that would also help reduce the variance for coverage, for building coverage. So.
I I could quickly comment on that, not to delay any thinking that I was under the impression that and maybe this is sort of going, because I really wanted to introduce those objects on the facade that are moving in and out that I thought, you know, I'm going to have a variance anyway, and it helps all my other spaces because I have to have a stair turnaround with the new code for the new spiral stair. It's been kind of a nightmare to fit everything in. So I was like, I need a side yard variance anyway. That foot is really helping me. I'm just gonna go for it, but I understand your concern, David, completely.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to respond to that, you know, the smaller bump outs have much less of an impact on neighboring properties. So to me, there's a big difference between a large three-story wall that's into the setback versus a bump that that has architectural interests.
Yeah.
Yeah, good comment. Thank you.
Great. Yep. Thank you for that, all those things, David. Are there other comments or deliberative thoughts from board members? Yes, I had a couple of things. My, as far as the fence on the north side of the property, the falling down, I guess it's a cyclone fence. My personal preference would be to just see that thing go away. And and not separate those two properties with the fence. If if they are separated with the fence, there should be a gate, there should be a way for there to be access, you know, back and forth between the properties. And it should be a much nicer fence than than exists there right now. I think that was brought up sort of early on. And and I think that the condition that Martina read sounded really, really good to me. And I also completely support adding the the restriction language that was sort of mentioned after the fact. And and I guess with regard to the fire hydrant, I don't know whether or not our fire official is comfortable with just, you know, we'll we'll talk about it or whether that is something that the board wants to require of the applicant.
I mean, for fire safety, if there isn't one on Witherspoon Lane, isn't there, isn't it needed?
I mean, Mr. Walker implied that it is needed, but it must not be required, or I'll let him opine on that. If he can figure out a way to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, currently, the the closest one is on Franklin and down further down Little. So it's almost over 500 feet from the closest hydrant going down Witherspoon Lane. So whether it's this project or another project that's going to happen in the future, we're going to have to really consider getting one installed down there.
You know, if the close, one of the closest ones is on Lidl Street, that one happens to be directly in front of my house and it's a, it's a ways. I would not, if I lived back there, I would not want to have, you know, for to be that far from a fire hydrant. So I do think that.
We'd have to run our hose over Witherspoon Street and shut down the street for extended period versus on Witherspoon Lane.
And just one piece of information to that, I think southerly on Witherspoon Street at about 400 feet is the next nearest hydrant. So it would be sort of an L shape down Witherspoon Lane and then southerly on Witherspoon Street. It's about 400 feet or or a little bit less to our building. So I think that's probably why you see the configuration you see because of that 400-foot radius. It's actually just about satisfied. We're right at the fringe there.
Yeah, it's it's very close, but with the newer construction that's going to be happening on Witherspoon Lane, we'd really like to see one back there, whether it's this project or another one.
Well, maybe the the department or our municipal offices or something can can arrange for some kind of cost sharing or something with other neighboring properties, but 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 I really think that there should be a a fire hydrant there and that we should speak to that.
Yeah, then.
I agree. I totally agree.
Okay, so.
I'm not sure if that condition gets worded, but certainly there should be, at very least, be some, particularly if there's future development that would benefit or, you know, it's almost like we're talking about a an off-site traffic or 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 other improvement. I just want to be careful to make sure that we're not getting into exaction territory. So if we could word it to.
Yeah, I I understand your point, but it's also this board's response. Yeah, I, I understand your point, but it's also this board's responsibility to um to take public health and welfare in mind. It, it it appears over and over again in the municipal land use law, and it's, it's, it's within our wheelhouse.
And I, I, I know from my very brief time as fire commissioner in Princeton that new construction catches and catches fire, the, the fire spreads quicker because of the materials that are used as opposed to. So you're talking about seconds really do matter in fire response. So if you're talking about a, a hose on, uh, uh hydrant on Lidle as opposed to a hydrant on Witherspoon Lane, that really does.
No, no disagreement here. We just, uh, you know, the, the process that gets us here involves us putting together a, a fire narrative and report probably about a year ago, and we end up talking about it tonight in a few minutes.
I understand, it might have felt like it came out of the blue. Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Okay. Point taken. Um, any other, uh, I see Mr. Cohen, you raising your hand or, uh, and I do want to hear.
Yeah, I just thought of one more thing that I was a little concerned about. The the site plan shows an existing seven-foot wide access easement uh, that's directly under the, the proposed building. And the notes suggest that the easement is no longer needed. Um, I didn't fully understand the rationale of why it was no longer needed, but I just wanted to suggest an additional condition that the, that easement be vacated, uh, you know, in support of the application.
You got that, Martina?
Yep.
I got that. Are we ready to, to hear, uh, Mr. O'Donnell? Were you raising your hand? No, he says.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bridger had his hand up.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna ask if our, if any of our um professionals or staff have anything else they'd like to say. Derek?
Um, I just, back to the fire hydrant, I just had a question whether this sprinkler worked on a pumper from a fire engine or whether it was in the building, because if it works from a pumper, um, there's already somewhat difficult access to the site for firefighting equipment. So um, I don't know if it's a fire department connection on the building that gets hooked up and powers the sprinkler inside or is that uh the way it is generally?
Yeah, we were proposing an FTC on the building.
So I mean, you know, what good's an FTC if you can't, if it takes you ten minutes to get the hose there, you know?
Um, he, he's exactly correct.
The other question was, um, this, the drawings do show a fence, but however the uh the three D graphics that were shown tonight showed more detail than that is in there. So uh, it's a nice detail with part brick and part wood. So I would say that there's a condition that we should see detail of the fence that goes behind um, the townhouses with the gate for the uh fire access as well. So.
Thank you, that's great.
There'll be permit parking, so that should cover the parking lot. Um and wheel stops should be put in next to the building, the existing non-residential building, so that the sidewalk is can actually function as a sidewalk. And uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, um Mr. Lesko.
Yes, Madam Chair, you mentioned earlier, um, I think in response to Marina's presentation um, about having a pathway to the Franklin site when it's future, when, when it's developed in the future. I don't know, did a condition come out of that or was one agreed to that would allow for for either, you know, if a bush goes there or if a fence with a gate goes there or just a fence goes there, that it could be removed in the future? Uh, we obviously don't know the site plan uh yet for that property. Um, but, you know, I, I wouldn't want uh this site plan to be so structured that we couldn't uh do exactly what was described tonight later on.
Um, well, I guess I would entertain ideas about the, the right way to just ensure that um.
Well, I think it's helpful if there's, if there's no fence, like you suggested, Louise, that's a, that's a big step in the right direction.
That's true. I mean, a landscape board, yeah, could, yeah, uh. I think that's a good way. Um, so Martina, are you ready to uh take us through conditions?
I am, but can I just, sorry to label this, going back to the fire hydrant, I, one, one idea would be, um, you know, in other municipalities um, do this in different ways, but I think we should resolve this. Um, maybe the applicant would agree to install the hydrant on Witherspoon and then subsequently could enter into a cost share agreement with other developers um and get reimbursed for that. Um that's a sort of broad outline of how that could work.
Does that sound good, Mr. Kennedy? I.
I think that's, I think that's, uh, that's a, that's a good solution, uh, for that. Thank you.
And just to be clear, we're talking on Witherspoon Lane, not on Witherspoon Street, correct?
Yeah.
I see Mr. Walker nodding, so yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yep. At a, at a location to be agreed on by uh the applicant and the fire department. Good, okay, great. Thank you, thank you for that.
If, if, if we could clarify, um, just before we get to the other conditions, uh, Mr. Bridgers and, and we, we talked about the the stops, and I think we, I, I've got confused with the existing building and the, the new building. So the existing building, um, there are current um wheel stops, uh, those will be maintained and kept on that side. Uh, was, was that the side you were talking about or the new building side?
No, I'm concerned about the old building, and I don't see them on the site plan, so.
Got it.
I don't recall seeing them out there, so.
So they're, they're, to, to the extent they're not, they will be, that's the plan for that side. So, all right, we just want to make sure you weren't talking about the new, the new side.
Now, the new building has occurred, so, I mean, thank you.
Yep. Okay, Martina.
Okay, so this is an application um for preliminary and final major site plan um approval. Um, I've identified ten variances, but um bear with me for one second, the two parking-related um requests for relief. Can somebody help me here? Are these, are these design waivers or are they variances? Because I think they're design waivers, that the size of the parking spaces and the front yard parking, I think, are.
They're variances.
Unfortunately.
Okay, wait. Um. Well, so twelve variances, um, I'll go over them. One, uh, the first one to um increase impervious coverage. Um, variances three, four, and uh, two, three, and four are to permit less than the required minimum dimension of twenty feet of usable open space. Variances five and six are to permit side yard setbacks um of less than the twenty feet required. Variants seven, eight, nine, and ten all relate to the, the uh rear yard setbacks to permit less than the twenty-five feet required. Um, a variance to permit parking spaces to be eight point five feet by eighteen feet um versus the nine by nineteen feet. And finally, um, variance to permit parking um in the front yard, um, which is not permitted. So, um, just going over the, um.
Sorry, Martina, um, I think you said on the first one, an increase in impervious coverage, that is not correct.
Sorry, I don't know, first of all, it's not impervious coverage, it's a decrease, um, to permit more than the, the permitted coverage.
Building, building, building coverage.
Yeah, building coverage, that's right, which is thirty percent, it's slightly above like thirty point um one percent. So I thank you for that. Okay, going, going over the conditions, I'm just gonna whip through the reports. Um and now Mr. Lesko's memo, I think much of the conditions were covered elsewhere, so I'm gonna skip over that. Um, in Mr. Weissman and, and Mr. Bridges' memo, most of the comments were covered, but there was one here um on page five, that the driveway apron and depressed curb at the Witherspoon Street driveway should be removed and replaced as this driveway is proposed to be repurposed, and I think that may be covered.
Yeah, I think the driveway apron and depressed curb are reduced per the testimony provided tonight, who was six foot wide.
Um, reduced.
Yeah, they still need something so that the, the rollout dumpsters can be.
Oh, that's right, yeah, reduced. Okay, um. All of that covered. Moving on to um Mr. Dobromovski's memo and all of the landscape related, related conditions. Sort of global condition that the applicant shall work with the municipal landscape architect to work out the landscape plan. Um, particularly with respect to the trees in front of the dwelling units, um, can, uh, and ensuring that they have enough room to grow. Um, second, that the landscape committee shall review the landscape plan. Um um, I'm just gonna go through these in no particular order. Um, the applicant shall provide native ground cover. Um, the tree of heaven shall be removed in the, at the northern property line. The English ivy along.
Southern, southern property, southeastern property line.
The English ivy, again, is that along the northern property line?
South, south line also, yeah.
Uh, shall be removed. Um, the applicant shall provide permeable pavers for the pedestrian pavement. Um, the applicant shall diversify this tree species. Um the applicant will provide green roofs on the lower roofs and the upper roofs shall be solar panel-ready. And relatedly, the applicant will um make every effort to install the solar panels as expeditiously as possible. Um, I'm gonna get to the green infrastructure in a second.
We'll also need a condition relative to my comment number one in my report about it, looking at the existing trees, the hedge, et cetera, to be preserved relative to the other site improvements to make sure that they actually work together.
This is. Okay, yeah, I can itemize that. I, I sort of thought that would, that would be covered by the global, but I can itemize that.
Yep.
Um, and then not, item number two as well, did you want something in about the?
Same thing, yeah.
The note on the plan, yeah.
Combine that.
Um, moving on to the PEC report. Okay, the applicant will look into use of a geothermal heat pump for heating. Um, the applicant will explore the use of deep root silver, uh, sort of silver cell green infrastructure. And then sort of generally, the applicant will um, to the extent feasible, um, in, in, employ green um construction and infrastructure. Uh, there was a note in the PEC memo that the northerly direction icon is not pointing in the same direction on the architectural and, and engineering draws, drawings. That should just be corrected.
We, I wasn't able to find it, but maybe, yeah, we'll find that and correct that.
Over. I think everything in the shade tree memo I covered. Yep, moving on to traffic. And Mr. Anasiki's um memo. Um, let's see, item two. Okay, this was raised a couple of times. Um, gates are to be installed um in the fences, in the backyards to facilitate access by fire and emergency surfaces to the rear of the buildings. Um, and I guess we, we added that, 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 that would be notated on the plans as well, detail of that would be provided.
As Derek referenced, yes, good.
A sidewalk or crosswalk connection between both buildings um are to be, is to be provided to accommodate pedestrian and bike movement between the residential units and the trash recycling area, which could be by painting on the parking area, for example. Um item six.
I believe this one moved to, to unit A uh by removing the tree of life and having a, a rear connection.
Tree of heaven.
It's late. Um, leave that one there.
Um, yeah.
Um, uh, but I think we, we shifted that to unit A and, and by having that uh uh, rear uh, close by um accessway.
For the ADA accessibility, you mean? Okay, I just got to that. Yeah, that's, I, item six is the applicant, um will consider providing ADA accessibility or, okay, sorry, let me start again. Um, the applicant shall work with the municipal engineers to work out improved ADA accessibility to the units. That's kind of general, is that okay?
Uh, we're, we're certainly fine with that. Uh, I just, as, if, is, yep, I think that works.
Okay. Additionally, the twenty-four foot drive aisle should be reduced to twenty-two feet to increase space for landscaping. Um, permit parking only signs shall be provided for spaces restricted uh for residents and commercial tenants. Um, the width of sixteen feet next to the striped parking space is to be increased. I don't know if I had that correct. Um, Mr. Camilak, I wonder if you can help me out with that one?
Yes, we were gonna reduce the depth of that compact stall from sixteen feet to fifteen feet near the northeast uh entry door.
From sixteen to fifteen. Um, with respect to parking and sort of can, um controlling the use of the parking lot, I was gonna suggest maybe a pri- um, a sign, signage that says private parking, just to reduce, to sort of help alleviate the traffic issue that one of our public commentators, um, Miss, Miss Lee suggested, so I can add that. Um, moving on to fire. Um, so the condition we just discussed, that the applicant shall install a fire hydrant on Witherspoon Lane with a location um to be determined um by the applicant and the um municipal fire marshal. Um with um and, and the applicant, um, the, I don't know how to word this quite, but the applicant shall be reimbursed for the cost of installing that off-site improvement um through a contribution agreement with future development, something to that effect. That works.
Thank you.
Um let's see, if there are, um, the solar panels will be um provided with signage shall be provided for the solar panels. Does that just mean a sign that, that indicates there are solar panels, or what is that actually?
Yeah, that's required by the fire code is to just have a sign stating that they are present on the building.
Got it, okay.
I'm not sure that needs to be in our resolution. I think it's just, it's a requirement.
Okay.
It's a building code requirement.
Yeah.
Got it. Um, I, I assume that also goes for the emergency shut-off signage for the EV parking.
Correct.
I mean, we often put in conditions that are required just to keep track of them, but um, um, if you don't think they're necessary, I'll skip them.
If you're down, proceed.
Okay, the applicant shall ensure um that the bike storage uh space is safe with respect to fire safety.
Well, that, I, I, I think it makes sense to to point out, if, if there are electric, if there are charging facilities for electric bikes, that it needs to be, um that, that space needs, needs some fire protect, some appropriate fire protection, which I don't know what, whether that's a traditional sprinkler or not, or.
Okay.
The, the fire subcode official for the town can uh dictate whatever.
Okay, yep. I got it. Per, per the dictate of the fire subcode official, that's perfect.
Um.
Just ask Victor, right?
Um, wheel stops to the extent needed will be added to the existing commercial building.
To the parking spaces behind the, yeah, existing building.
Right, okay. Um, and, and this is the category of other uh that I'm gonna go through. Um, the affordable housing condition that I read with the addition of the um deed notice restriction. Um, I think Mr. Kennedy had indicated that the units would be rental and not condominiumized. I'll put that in.
Well, uh, 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 so that is the intention. I would prefer that not to be, uh, um, I I don't know that we can bind future owners on that way for that to be a condition if that's if that's acceptable.
Fair enough.
Mr. Weissman?
Uh, just if if that's not going to be a condition, I would just request that, uh, a condition be carried that if they are sold somewhere down the line, that they are deeded a parking spot.
That's certainly agreeable.
Okay. Parking spots. Um, the applicant should work with the municipal staff to ensure that the mural, the proposed mural does not tr- um, trigger the sign ordinance requirements. Um, I'm I'm scattering about a little bit here. Um, this is again related to the fence. Um, that the northern boundary, uh, chain link fence is to be removed and replaced by a new fence. Do I have that right?
Well, I I, for my part, I just want to see that I would prefer that it be removed. Um, I would be comfortable with a landscape, uh, landscape fence, as it were, um, and and let it let the you know, future development of the neighboring property, redevelopment of the neighboring property sort of play out between the neighbors. But it's the but I I I do, I don't know the right way to say it, but I think that the the board should support the connection between these two properties and, um, you know, porosity is how I think of it, but I don't know what the right wording is. Pedestrian pedestrian connections between.
How about the applicant will work with municipal staff and the and the, um, landscape architect to, um, replace the existing chain link fence fence on the northern boundary um, wi- with, um, landscape buffering as an alternative.
Yeah, I mean, I think the applicant shall remove the chain link fence, uh, and provide uh, yeah, vegetated, uh, buffer that is acceptable to the landscape architect and the landscape committee.
Got it. Okay, we had, um, the condition that the applicant shall do whatever is necessary to ensure that the, uh, seven foot easement that's shown on the plans is terminated. I think that covers everything. Did I miss anything?
Well, I was suggesting the 22 foot width instead of 23 foot width of, I mean.
Oh, okay. I I I I agree with David on this. I I don't know how strongly other folks feel about it, but, um, I I don't think it's a whole lot to ask and I think that it would make a difference.
And I think the way to phrase that, Martina, because we really can't dictate design. But what I would say is that the side yard variance is denied except for, um, occasional encroachments of projecting elements.
And by that, you mean the bike structure and the and the mechanicals, uh?
And also the there's there are overhangs, you know, upper floor, um, sort of bays that project out.
So David, am I understanding correctly is you would like the main wall to comply and then we can have bay windows and things just like they are and the the auxiliary wings, whatever we call them.
Exactly.
And the overhang? The roof?
The roof.
Yeah, I mean, that's even, that's that's not even if this is the borough, the overhangs are permitted.
Only if you meet the setback.
Okay.
So as long as the wall complies, all the other ins and outs and overhangs and the things are okay.
Would it be possible to to phrase that as 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 a difference is granted for those things beyond the main wall rather than having it say that the variances or the request is denied?
There you go.
I guess the glass is half, the glass is half full, right?
So sorry, just can you give, could you give me the language for that?
So the the side yard setbacks are granted, um, for the portions of the building that extend beyond the main walls on each side.
Okay, you know, I.
And and the applicant will consider, are we, so are we requiring the applicant to consider reconfiguring the width of the units?
They can do it however they want, as David was, I think, try, you know, saying that it, we can't dictate design, but the main wall needs to meet the setback requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think that that should be clear in there rather than just the, yep. Got it.
Um, I think that. One more thing on our end, just on the the 22 feet, um, uh, we hadn't looked, you know, we we looked on the the function of there and there's a there's a chance that maybe RSIS requires the 24 feet. So we we just phrase that, that if there is some relief needed from the town's requirements or 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 the the applicable requirements for that aisle with that we're we're granting it here tonight. I I think it for 90 degree spaces, one of those regulations might suggest or require 24 feet.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Well, they can suggest it, but I think if both parties agree and it with the blessing of engineers and, uh, firefighting officials, I don't, and and with the understanding that nobody's going to appeal to RSIS and to strike everything down. I mean, I, well, you know, you're the lawyer. I'm sorry.
Completely agreed. I just want to make sure that that it's, you know, uh, if it's, it's not just an instruction that we try to do it so much as it's if it the 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 board is.
There might be, there might be somebody who's not here tonight, Louise, who could appeal it.
Yep.
It's better to have the relief granted.
It is. If I could just chime in, sorry, it it is a design standard in the Princeton code, so it it does require a waiver from that standard.
Okay. So in addition to the wave, to the variances, one waiver from the RSIS.
Uh,
From the municipal, I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, from the municipal code. Um, this may apply to RSIS. I I'm not convinced that it does because RSIS is for when, um, items are clear and separated on sites that are occupied by both. Um, this parking lot is used for where both the non-residential and the residential side of it. So you can make the argument that the parking lot is not solely for residential, therefore RSIS wouldn't apply.
That is a really good point. And for the public, RSIS is the residential site improvement standards set of state rules about how you can and cannot develop residential properties. Tim?
Yeah, the there was some discussion about a a change to the plan as presented to the board to allow those with limited mobility or handicaps to access the to access the building via the rear. Should we make that a condition or?
Covered it.
I I think.
Apologies if you did. I'm sorry.
Good point. She's got it. Uh huh.
That's it for me.
Okay, with those conditions, Mr. Cohen?
I move approval.
And is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Taylor. Uh, Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Uh, Carrie lost.
Justin?
Yeah, Carrie lost connection, so I I'll do the the honors.
Thank you.
Mrs. Capizole?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Your tech Charlie? Yes. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, thank you all so much for, um, hanging in. I I really will try to not do this again. My 15 minute estimate was.
I was pessimistic, but not pessimistic enough.
Um, and thanks to the applicant. Thanks to, um, members of the public who, um, are are still with us. And, um, with that, Mr. Cohen?
I move to adjourn.
I will.
I'll second it.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, everyone.
Hi.
See you next week. See you next week.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.